This is the May 1st meeting of Yellow Springs Village Council. Happy May Day, everyone. We've already called the roll. We were in executive session before this meeting. First, we have announcements. And I see we have two guests here. We have Jeff Brock from Green Memorial Hospital and Green Medical Foundation, and Dale Bruner from the Greater Dayton YMCA. YMCA, excuse me.
Thank you all for the opportunity to share with you this evening. I particularly thank you to Karen Windtro for this opportunity. What Dale Bruner is presenting to you is a white paper on a project that's being known across Green County as the REACH Center. And if you look on page 13, you'll see that this center will be located in Xenia. And if you look on page 19, you'll see that the scope of service of this center actually reaches into Yellow Springs. So we thought it very important to come to you this evening to make sure that you were aware of this. You might hear more across the county or in your interactions with others here in Yellow Springs who become familiar with this project. You will see by the summary on the front page that the acronym REACH stands for Recreation, Education, Activity, Community, and Health Center. And it's a collaboration of six partners, primarily centered around Kettering Health Network and the YMCA of Greater Dayton. But you also see that Clark State is involved, Central State, the Xenia Adult Recreation and Service Center, which we just simply call the Senior Center, and the city of Xenia as well. And there might be other partners who join us later in the future. But these six partners have come together to offer a common service center with its various components, some a shared space, some distinct space, to make for a dynamic center that offers all of these services, from education to activity to health care to community wellness. And I'm going to pause there because the greatest share and partner in this is the YMCA of Greater Dayton. And Dale can talk you through the specific partner associations with this. So Dale, come forward.
Again, thanks for your time today. Just to briefly talk about the Y for a minute, we've tried to do everything in partnership since 2000. So we, just as Jeff mentioned about the partners in this particular YMCA and this whole center, we have different partners across the region. So if you go down to our Springville location, we're partnered with a hospital partner and a church. You go out to our Preble County location, we're partnered with Kettering Health Network. We're partnered with Sinclair Community College. And then, of course, the Y. You go to our Huber Heights location, it's the same thing. We're with Kettering Health Network in Sinclair. And then over to Inglewood, same thing. So everything we try to do is in partnership. We were just coming today just to update you on the project. We just kicked off a capital campaign for the project. As of last Wednesday night, we're about $14.5 million raised for the campaign on a $17 million campaign. So we're just for that last $2.5 million is where we're at right now. Each of the partners has a specific space within the building. So both college partners would have 4,500 square feet. The Senior Center would have about 10,000 square feet. And the YMCA would have about 36,000 square feet. The whole goal is to create workforce development across our region with the college partners working with Kettering Health Network. And then our goal, of course, is to make sure that when the people would like to use the colleges' services for higher education, the Y could be there to offer some babysitting for the kids and parents at that time. So a safe place for them to be while their parents are taking classes at the Y for the non-traditional student, so to speak. So this is an exciting partnership for us. We have 22 people currently working on the capital campaign right now. As I said, it kicked off last Wednesday, and we're going to meet every three weeks. The goal is to break ground of this facility by December of 2017. Some of the funding for this project, the Xenia where it's located at, we were lucky enough that, first of all, Kettering Health Network purchased the land that we have that we'll sit on. There's around 35 acres of land right next to Walmart and Lowe's right on 35. So we'll be back out on the highway there. That falls into what's called new market tax credits. We were eligible for new market tax credits. So we applied for them because of the demographics of that area. And we were awarded $9.5 million in new market tax credits for the project. Now, keep in mind, when you say $9.5 million, it sounds really, really great, which it is. But once that, all the fees and everything's unwound, it's about $2.5 million that will actually go to the project. So I don't want to ... So but we're excited to get started. A lot of people are working on this, and it's been about two and a half years of us talking about this particular project. And we're finally at the point for the capital campaign to start. So again, just wanted to come here and give you a quick update. Is there any questions at all that we can answer for you on this?
Can you say a little more about the services? I mean, it seems very broad.
Sure. So full-service Y from an eight-lane lat pool to gymnasium to free weights to cardio equipment, nursery services, multipurpose room, just the normal YMCA. The actual colleges will have classrooms. So currently, if you were to go to our Huber Heights Y or Klebs Y, Sinclair has about 15,000 square feet. These will be much smaller footprints, but it's 4,500 square feet for Clark State and Central State at this time, unless they were to change them. So they would offer classes in the building. And then the Senior Center does everything from offering rides to providing meals to the seniors of Green County. And then also, they have a whole bunch of rooms and cafeteria area for people to eat or for people to play small, quiet activities. So that's really ...
And what about, are there health services?
Yes. So right now, the Kettering Health Network is working on, right, the plan as of right now is to put a 17,000-square-foot building, to have some docs in the particular building, also some physical therapy, and other services as needed for the community.
Sounds like a great project. I mean, it just sounds like a great collaboration, great team being put together, good location for the county. And I would expect that there will be some Yellow Springs folks using it. We do love our Antioch College Wellness Center, but, you know, it sounds like with the collaboration with the universities that there could be some additional offerings that could be. And you said that those were related more to workforce training?
Yeah, specifically, the goal would be to help the workforce development for the county. But it will go in correlation with the services offered by Kettering Health Network as well.
Great. Any other questions? Questions from citizens?
Yeah, of course. How would that affect the Wellness Center?
I personally don't think it will. I mean, I think our folks love the proximity of Yellow Springs, and I think that locals use the Wellness Center. I think we, some folks did go to the Xenia Y when the Wellness Center closed, but I think that most have come back to the Wellness Center. So I see it as an enhancement. I don't, as an additional offering, I don't see it as a threat to the Wellness Center, personally.
And actually, it's about two and a half miles further away from where the current location is right now.
Thank you both very much. Thanks a lot. And you're very welcome to sit here for another couple hours to listen to the rest of our meeting.
I mean, you love Yellow Springs. Maybe not that.
Tomorrow is a very important day. It's election day. I believe that Brian has a few comments he wants to make about a couple of the issues that are on the ballot for Yellow Springs.
Yeah, and in fact, if everyone doesn't know, there are two issues on the ballot. And I just want to remind everyone, if you haven't had time to read the literature, for our schools, it is a renewal levy. This is for day-to-day operations. And the other levy that is on the ballot is for the new Miami Township Fire and Rescue Station. And I think it's really important to remember that per $100,000 value of your home, it will add $85 a year, $84 a year. So please go out and vote. The voting stations are AUM. And these brochures, by the way, are outside as well. I have a few other announcements.
Sure.
So May Day also marks Bike Month, and a lot of exciting stuff is going on. If you were not at our Trail Town Designation Ceremony last Thursday, there was a statewide resolution passed for the Year of the Trail. Green County passed a Year of the Trail resolution. Yellow Springs followed up, and the state of Ohio has now done that, courtesy of Representative Rick Peralis, who was there at the dedication. Bike to School Day is on May 10th, so make sure to watch out for all our kids that are going to be biking that day, both to Mills Lawn and McKinney and the high school. And I just wanted to highlight a couple free events that are happening. The Miami Valley Cycling Summit is this Friday. That's at Wright State University this year. And a great lineup of speakers. Actually, I'm speaking.
Yes.
See? About the Economic Benefit of Trails. Also, the International Trail Summit, which is a symposium which is coming to Dayton, starts on Sunday, May 7th. There is a free public day at the Convention Center where you can see all kinds of trail building equipment and how those are set up. And on Monday, there is the Trails Rock Party at Riverside that's also free and open to the public. So lots of great stuff happening with active transportation.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else?
I just wondered if Patty would tell people about the Swimming For All program.
Sure. The Swimming For All program is available to those with limited income to provide discount pool passes. And if you believe that you qualify for this or would like to find out if you qualify for this, please contact my office. Ruth Ann will be happy to talk to you about that.
And pool passes are available now?
Pool passes are available from noon to 9:00 downstairs in the youth center until the pool opens Memorial Day weekend, at which point they will be available only at the pool during operating hours.
And what day is that the pool will be opening? And what time?
It is the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, which makes it the 25th, I believe. And I am not sure about the time, but I am guessing ...
27.
27.
27. And I'm guessing it is at noon, which is the time in Longview.
11. 11? Oh, is that a Saturday? Okay, then it's noon, sorry.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hope everybody's looking forward to it. Hope it'll be a nice weekend for the pool to open. So did everyone get an opportunity to read the revised minutes? I'm not sure if we should do it as a consent agenda since there were changes sent. Did everybody see those?
I did.
Okay. Chris, can we, should we just go ahead and not do it as a consent agenda because Judy sent out some changes to the minutes?
Go ahead and do it outside.
Okay.
And you know what? You do not have revised, you don't have revised stuff at your table. So we can just shoot it on to the next one.
Okay, so we won't have minutes for this last meeting. Okay, thanks. Next is a review of the agenda. We do have one item to add. We have another resolution, Resolution 2017-21, to add to public hearings and legislation. Anything else that we want to change with the agenda?
I had wanted to suggest that we move our staff reports to an earlier spot, maybe right after legislation, just because I think the staff reports are very important in terms of what staff's doing. And often, it's way at the end of the meeting when people already left, and so people don't really get the information.
Okay, so let's put staff reports after public hearings and legislation?
Do we need to add the nominations for the Economic Sustainability Commission?
We could do that. Let's add that under new business.
And the Tucumso Land Trust request?
We'll add that also. Okay, anything else? And then Brian, will you review the petitions and communications, please?
Yes. So we received two letters, one from Barbara Mann and one from Suzanne Oldham, asking council not to regulate Airbnbs because they add a lot of value, and we've discussed that at council table in recent meetings. The letter from Makasa Sims that Jerry highlighted at the last meeting is officially in this time, which was talking about how excited the kids were to have Chief Carlson there to support them with their field trip. We also received a letter from Jeff Reich, who highlighted the importance of having supervision during all shifts with the PD, as well as Sharon Mohler, who discussed the importance of understanding what the role of the chief was and what our goals were as a village and our values. And the last letter that's not on the agenda was from Mike and Carol McKeever, supporting hiring Brian Carlson for the permanent chief position.
Okay.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Green County Public Health. An exciting press release that talks about how we now have in Green County a federally-qualified health center, which brings a lot of benefits to Green County. There's a three-page press release about that in the packet. Very interesting services and really important for Green County. First one locally here.
Thanks, Brian. Moving on to public hearings and legislation, second reading and public hearing ordinance 2017-09 by title only.
Sure. This is repealing Section 674.02, removal of plants and weeds by owner of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new Section 674.02, removal of plants and weeds by owner.
Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Patty, would you explain this one?
Absolutely. This is a revision of the old ordinance. It lifts the mow date, so there is no longer a mow date. There is now a mow height. Your grass cannot exceed nine inches in height. It expands the list of invasive species that are included in the ordinance, and they're listed. And I believe that the Environmental Commission is working on some educational literature about those plants. It also differentiates between a managed landscape, which does not have to be mowed, but needs to be maintained, and a grass lawn, which does need to be mowed.
I noticed, because the list has kind of shifted a bit, and, you know, once I looked at it very carefully, I noticed that there Tree of Heaven, Lesser Solendine, and Japanese Knot Weed are listed under 1 and under 3. And it seems that the intent of those two sections is different, so maybe they shouldn't be listed in both sections?
I think they need to be listed in both sections only because those are three of the most incredibly invasive and widespread species. And I think the intent was to make it clear that those three species are of particular concern.
Which is what 1 is about.
Right. But they, but they also want them to be included in the full list of invasive species. Right? Nick, is that your understanding? Because Nick helped us with it a little bit.
Well, we're not listing the first five there.
I would be inclined to agree with Brian's sentiment. I think paragraph 1 or section 1 kind of struts, I'm sorry, that word, section 3, and that things are included in that first section, they wouldn't need to be mentioned.
Okay. I mean, we can revise it if you want, to put those three only under section 1?
Yeah, because the difference, the way I understand it, section 1 says you must actively destroy these. Section 3 is more of a recommendation to manage them. I think it would be good just to be clear on that. So I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance and take out those repetitions in section 3.
Which was, what was the, I have ...
It's the last three. Tree of Heaven, Lesser Solendine, FG and H.
Japanese Knot Weed, yes. So you want to remove those from the second?
From section 3.
From section 3. FG and T. Okay. Can I get a motion?
So.
Second.
All those in favor of that change, say aye.
Aye.
So are we passing it?
We're just passing, no, we're passing just that revision, just that change. Anything else? Any other comments from council?
I'd like to say that I'm going to vote against this. I think there's, the thing I'm concerned about is that there are, what are amount to small fields that are in the village, you know, adjacent to people's homes, could be land that they own, et cetera, that I don't think should have to be mowed necessarily. And I don't think there's any distinctions made in the legislation. And I, in fact, I think it's one of the kind of nice things about the village, it kind of has this rural, rural aspect to what are basically meadows that are within the village. So that's my reason for when I vote no. That's my rationale.
It would be my understanding, and Patty or Nick clarify this, I mean, if we're talking about a field that doesn't have grass in it, then it doesn't need to be mowed.
As long as it ... Well, but these are, these are grassy areas. They're, you know, and I, it's unclear to me what the, you know, if the neighbor, I understand it will be probably enforced by complaint, but I just, I don't feel like we should mandate that in those instances.
Well, if you read A, it says the owners of any lot or parcel of land situated within the village.
Yeah, it includes everything.
Whether it's improved or unimproved, vacant or occupied. So the intent is to have the ...
To have everything in ...
Right, but I, but what she was describing to me was a managed, somewhat of a managed ...
Well, I'm not talking about a managed, you know, managed is more complicated than most of these pluses are. They're unmanaged, and they're meadows often. So anyway, I just wanted to explain that.
This is the second reading. I will open the public hearing for comment from citizens. Three minutes, and please come to the microphone and state your name if you have any comments. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Are we ready to take a vote, council?
Yeah.
Okay, Judy, would you please call the vote, call the roll?
Sims?
Yes.
Cowsh?
Yes.
Humphling?
No.
McQueen?
Yes.
Windtro?
Yes.
Next is emergency ordinance, emergency reading of ordinance 2017-10, title only.
Okay. This is authorizing the village manager to take all steps necessary to complete the sale of a portion of village-owned property known as Sutton Farm to Glenn Helen Association Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Patty, would you please? And I see Nick is here, so ...
Nick is here. Nick contacted me last week and said, hey, can we close on the sale of Sutton Farm on May the 26th, which we are scheduled to close on May the 26th? However, on Nick's end of it, I believe his title attorney would like this resolution passed just confirming council's willingness to sell the parcels of land to the Glenn Helen Institute. And Nick is coming to explain further.
Hi, Nick Buttis, Yellow Springs citizen, Director Glenn Helen. Our title agent requests that whoever's present for the closing has the authorization to sign documents on behalf of the village, which wasn't something that was addressed in the option. So it doesn't change anything. It just gives Patty or whoever you might assign the ability to follow through on our previously agreed option.
Okay. And just so it's clear that this ordinance does declare Patty the agent that will be signing on behalf of the village. Any comments or questions? This is an emergency reading, so I will open the public hearing for citizen comment, question. Seeing and hearing none, we'll bring it back for a vote. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Oh, hey, Karen, Karen, could you say how much the village is being paid for the, or Patty?
Is it 102, Nick? I have it in my folder, but it's going to take me a minute to find it.
I actually did not bring the document. It's closer to 2 than 1.
$200,000, you're saying? Dollars, yeah.
Well, if we're going to explain, then, did you get a Clean Ohio grant? Is that the, just for the, for the community, just review the reason for this.
I didn't bring the original option agreement today, but it's, it was funded through a Clean Ohio Conservation Fund project and was set up such that the village was providing, providing match by donating part of the property value as discovered through the appraisal.
And the purpose?
The purpose of the acquisition is to take land that has been used essentially as de facto green space with conventional agricultural on it since the village acquired it around in the 1960s, and establish a more intentional form of land stewardship to ensure that it was integrated ecologically into Glenn Helen to enhance water quality in Birch Creek, remove drainage tiles where they exist, get away from conventional soybean farming, and generally see that those 76 acres become a meaningful ecological corridor, part of the, part of the green space of the village as managed to provide the maximum water quality and wildlife habitat.
And this property, when it was purchased by the village, almost immediately had agricultural easement put on it. So it's been under conservation easement for a long time.
The village purchased it about 50 years ago.
Oh, 50.
And the conservation easement was placed, it was actually its first easement placed by the Tucumso Land Trust as an organization in the 90s, I believe.
Great. And it looks like the village will be getting around $206,000 on the sale, from the sale of this property. And, you know, as Nick said, it had been farmed, so it's going to be great for us, you know, to reduce the amount of pesticides and to have it revert to a more natural habitat will be good for everyone, I think. So any other comments or questions? Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Humphling?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Cowsh?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Windtro?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 2017-21. We will read that in full.
This is authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement and release with Randall K. Hawley, Jr., whereas Randall K. Hawley, Jr., Hawley, serves as a police officer for the village, and whereas the village and Hawley agree that it is in the best interest of both parties that Hawley separate from his employment with the village, and whereas the village and Hawley have entered into an employment separation and release agreement, the agreement, and whereas the village manager recommends village council authorize her to enter into an agreement with Hawley for the purpose of terminating his employment with the village, now therefore, council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, village council accepts the recommendation of village manager and hereby authorizes the village manager to enter into the agreement with Hawley and to take all actions required thereunder that result in Hawley's separation from employment with the village. Section 2, the village manager is hereby authorized to enter into the agreement attached here 2 as Exhibit A in the same or substantially similar form. Section 3, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Chris, could you manage to get out of your chair?
His background on what led to this agreement being discussed and talked about was I was contacted by Officer Hawley's lawyer to discuss his potential separation from employment from the village, based, and primarily was based upon the events that occurred on New Year's Eve. And there was a mutual recognition that, under the circumstances, it was in the best interest of all involved, frankly, Officer Hawley and the village, that he should no longer be employed here. As a result of that, we talked about the terms and conditions that are reflected in the agreement. And the resolution would, is a requisite that the council has to do to authorize the village manager to approve and sign that agreement so that it would be binding. The effect of that signature upon approval by council would be that Officer Hawley would separate from employment by closing business. separate from employment by close of business on May 4th.
Thank you. Comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from citizens?
Laura Curless, Village of Yellow Springs. This is a good result. I think people have been waiting for a long time for this. There are things in here people won't like, but I think it's the right move. The one thing I would like to see, if you could include it, is an apology from Officer Hawley to the citizens of Yellow Springs. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Any other comments or questions? Are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's staying.
Staff reports. Patty, we'll start with yours.
There is an update on the TLT Community Solutions easement. Community Solutions closed on the parcels that they bought from the Arnovitz property on Friday, April 28th, and as part of that closing, we were able, in conjunction with Tecumseh Land Trust, to put a conservation, a conservation easement on approximately 80 acres of the repairing corridor of Jacoby Creek through those parcels. So that is protected.
And what is that amount to from the green space?
It was 68,000, I do not have the exact number, 68,200 and something, I believe, was donated, was provided by the village and the remainders was provided by Tecumseh Land Trust.
And can you elaborate a little bit on the nature conservancy piece?
The nature conservancy came out, met with Tecumseh Land Trust. We believe that we may be able to, in the near future, get a grant from the nature conservancy that allows us to recoup all of that money. In addition to that, they are going to do some restoration work along the corridor as well.
Great.
So, it was $64,960. Thank you, Melissa. Welcome back. Just to say that was, you know, this, we could see the preservation of this land, basically, you know, around, especially around the creek, and we could see all of our green space funds reimbursed, so that seems like a real positive.
And we had pledged $200,000, so only a small portion of that's being used.
Patty?
But it is important to note that the majority of the creek corridor is being protected with that. Yes, Mary Ann?
Has that been surveyed?
Has it been surveyed, actually surveyed yet? No.
How can we put an easement on it if it's not surveyed?
They have drawn it along, according to the geographical lines on the, the drainage lines, is my understanding.
I guess, I was wondering, because are we still waiting on the survey for the glass farm?
We are. We are still waiting on the survey for the glass farm, yes.
And it's possible that the easement hasn't been put on. The funds were just, were-
Provided.
Provided, in anticipation of the easement being put on and for the sale to go through, and to enable Community Solutions to actually purchase the property. So, it's possible that the easement actually hasn't happened yet, but I don't want to-
They've signed a binding agreement.
A binding agreement, okay.
As I announced at the last council meeting, the village is participating in a, we have a moratorium on the use of pesticides, and we've been working with a group called Beyond Pesticides through the Environmental Commission to find better ways to provide nutrients to our soils. We are doing a test plot at Gaunt Park. We have moved the test plot, and this is what we want people to be aware of this week. We've moved it from part of the ultimate frisbee field over to the left field of the softball diamond. And the reason that we've done that is because that was where the samples were actually taken from. Again, I want everyone to be very aware that these are organic nutrients that are being put on the soil, it's things like dried molasses. They are perfectly safe for you to walk on as soon as they're put down. I, I don't put chemicals on my own lawn, and I would put these on my own lawn. I would play softball on this field as soon as they put this on it. So, this is perfectly safe. We will be marking that test area so that you know where it is, and you know what's going on, and we will keep you informed, and hopefully you'll see the results of this new program that we're testing. Sutton Farm update, we've already talked about. Dayton Yellow Springs Infrastructure Project, we have received all of the permits, the relevant permits, from the EPA. We've talked to majors enterprises, and we hope that they will begin work again on that project as soon as they finish their water line project in Monroe. We hope that to be no later than June 1st, that they get started back on that. The water plant continues to progress ahead of schedule. Currently, we're about two weeks ahead of schedule, and it's a little bit muddy out there right now, but hopefully this wind is drying it out a little bit, and we'll stay ahead of schedule.
Sounds good. Judy?
Well, I just got all sentimental about the fabulous people that work here, and I was commenting that with the windows open, I can hear kids playing in the park and playing ball over on the, on the basketball area, and watched one of the streets and parks fellows stop, take time out to free a stuck basketball the other day for a citizen, and then play him a little game of one-on-one before he went back to his mowing. There's just a lot of nice interaction that happens, I don't think people, you know, unless you're in the interaction at that moment, you don't tend to see it, and I get to kind of a lot, which is very, very nice, and would like to say it's one of the best parts of my job, and I think really is why most folks who work here enjoy working here, is being able to do that as much as we get to do that. So, that was pretty much it. Other than that, I had to order the bike lights from China, which is not a slam on anything, except to say that's super far away, and they're wending their way here, and we very much hope they're here by May 10th, but we have a little bit of a backup plan in case they're not here for the Bike to School Day for, for the school kids, and they will get here before the end of school.
Thank you.
Judy, and I just wanted to say I appreciated that you also highlighted how important Bryan Youth Center is for so many of our local youth, and-
Yeah, it's, quite honestly, truly, I want to give a huge shout out to them, I should have. It's where kids go when your parents can't pay for you to go to an after-school program, truly, and they do a great job, and it's, it's every single afternoon, those guys are out there making sure kids are all taken care of.
Thanks. Melissa, welcome back. I know you don't have a report, but we're glad to have you back.
Yes, we are.
Love seeing you sitting at the table. And Chief Carlson, I know you were out all week, do you have a report you'd like to make?
Well, I'll just say-
What, can you just come up? And tell them why you were out all week, I'm sure you will.
Last week, Sergeant Watson and myself were out at CIT training. The Montgomery County Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services were gracious enough to allow us to join their 40-hour seminar, and it was fantastic. I have to say, some of the best law enforcement training I've ever received. We, it wasn't just classrooms with death by PowerPoint and lectures, and we weren't learning how to manipulate someone's arm and how we stand, we were learning about how to deal with people with, with real mental health issues and substance abuse issues. We role-played, that was fun. You guys will get a kick out of the fact that during one of the role-plays, I whipped out my harmonica to calm someone, and they told me they've never seen that before. I said, yes! We spent one day having lunch at the Miracle Clubhouse in downtown Dayton by UD. If you ever have the chance, it's open to the public, show up at 11:30, lunch is 50 cents or a dollar. Everyone there is through some type of rehabilitation or has some developmental disabilities, and they were some of the most wonderful people I've met. They served a fabulous lunch, and we just, we had a great time. We also spent one afternoon assigned individually to a social worker, and I happened to be with a wonderful young man who devotes his life to social work because of his brother's situation. We, we did five, we visited five of his clients in East Dayton, and it was amazing. You have no idea the interaction and the beautiful things these people bring to the world. So that's pretty much it for my week. It's been a whirlwind. Saturday, Jennifer Berman was kind enough to introduce me and allow me to, to speak with a couple of gentlemen about some wonderful things they're doing in Rockford, Illinois regarding the Martin Luther King nonviolence, and forgive me, I can't remember his name.
Sammy Wilson.
Yeah, and it was fantastic, and we saw some interesting photography from around the world, and so I leave tomorrow for South Carolina to, for my daughter's graduation, but I promise I'll be back.
Congratulations on your daughter's graduation, and please bring that harmonica to council meetings. We may need it sometime. Okay, now we move on to hearing from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. If you do want to speak, we ask that you come up to the microphone and state your name and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Cruz. My citizen concern this evening is that recently I saw on one of the Yellow Springs social media pages, something about why does the Village of Yellow Springs hate poor people? Now, I don't agree with that, I don't think it's true, but it did bring to mind a couple of things that I've been thinking about. Last year, when it was brought forward that people were leaving town without paying their final utility bills, and the village was using between $14,000, $15,000 a year from this, village council pretty quickly took action to, first of all, make it so landlords were held responsible for that shortfall, and also that letters were sent to landlords when their tenants were in arrears, which I consider public shaming, but apparently it was agreed to do that anyways. And at the same time, someone brought an issue to the council about charging an excise tax for rooms in the new hotel, and the man, the owner of the hotel did not like that idea. And I kind of worked out the numbers, and I realized that the average cost of the hotel rooms, even if all those rooms are only booked on the weekends per whole year, 3% excise tax would come out to about $14,000 to $15,000. So I kind of have to wonder why it was so important to get this $14,000 to $15,000 from citizens who are already disadvantaged or they would be paying their utility bills, but it's not that important because, to get this excise tax, because I was told it would be brought back to the table in April, this is May, not only was it not brought back to the table, I see it nowhere on this agenda. And particularly, we have invested in that hotel. I asked Patty Bates at the time, when I found out that we put in $264,000 worth of infrastructure work to build that hotel, and I asked Patty if that work would have had to be done if it weren't for the hotel, and she told me no. So, that means we have invested a quarter of a million dollars in that hotel, and asking for them to contribute to the community, what most other hotels contribute, which is a 3% tax or so, that would be passed on to the consumer, it wouldn't even be coming out of the hotel owner's pocket. Why we are not going after that money, that, and I'd also even maybe like to look into, I've seen that excise taxes can be earmarked for specific uses, maybe we even want to pass an excise tax and also look into what that tax could be earmarked for, something that the village needs, that we could use that money. And also, I was told that we would be bringing back to the table the issue of sending out the letters to the landlords when tenants are behind, and I don't see that on the agenda either. So those are my citizens' concerns for this evening.
Patty, could you please tell us when the lodging tax is coming back onto the agenda?
Yes, actually, I was just, I actually put a reminder in my calendar for it so that I wouldn't forget it, and it's on the May 22nd, it's actually on my May 22nd calendar to remind me to bring it back and put it on the council agenda this year.
For?
For the June meeting? For the June meeting, yes. I just wanted to add too, that I had put on the council goals that we relook at that policy around, around utilities, and so I'm, and I'm supposed to be getting together with staff, so I need to get on that. I think that's very important, that we relook at that policy. I do think that it can be detrimental to tenants who are struggling financially to have those letters sent out, and, and just that there be a better approach. I think we should try to come up with a better approach when people are struggling with their utility bills.
And going back to the hotel tax, we did at our council retreat confirm that that was coming back, so it should have been on the upcoming agenda items.
Except that we didn't have an agenda planning meeting, so-
Right.
We don't have anything for June, yes?
Right, because of the retreat, but, so, any other citizens' concerns? Okay, moving on to our special reports, we have Design 9 here to actually do a final report on the community fiber. We got somewhat of a, an interim report about a month ago, and now we're, we're done. And there was a lengthy report, it wasn't in the packet, I think it was probably available online.
Actually, it wasn't, it wasn't in the packet.
It wasn't in the packet, okay, good.
As well as the executive summary.
And the executive summary, so.
Yes, and this is Dr. Andrew Kohill.
Okay.
Thanks for your time tonight. I do have a very brief presentation, if we just go to the next slide. Goals of the study, very quickly, were to do a citizen and business survey, to look at the feasibility of doing some kind of fiber initiative in the town, and coming up with a set of recommendations and build out options, and we've done that, next slide. I talked about the survey results last time, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, you can look at the report for more detail. But, but it's clear that, that there's a majority of both residents and businesses would like to have both, both better internet TV and telephone services, and more choice of services. I will note that in the comments, there, there was, a lot of the comments were something to the effect that they weren't sure the village ought to be doing that, and there were questions why the private sector hadn't done it. So, even though a lot of people feel like things could be better, not everyone's convinced that, that the village government ought to be involved in doing that. Next, next slide. So, I'm not going to read through, this is survey feedback, just some of the data, again, it's a majority of residents are looking for better services. Next, next slide. So, I just wanted a couple of definitions before I go into the options we looked at. We looked at two different kinds of networks, a dark fiber network and a lit fiber network. In a dark fiber network, the village would, would install dark fiber on utility poles, meaning there's no elect, the village would not buy any electronics, you would lease out dark fiber pairs to private sector providers who would, who would install their own electronics. It's somewhat less expensive. It, it, and, and so a lit fiber network is both the fiber on the utility poles, plus the village would buy all of the network electronics on, on each end of the fiber. So, it's, it's a more expensive approach, gives the, the revenues a little higher, but the costs are also a little higher. Next slide. So, we looked at, at four different options, very broadly. You can work with existing providers. You have both a telephone and cable TV provider in Yellow Springs. Prices here are reasonably competitive compared to many other areas of the country. The second option is that the village installs a, a dark fiber network and leases that out to one or more service providers. Third option is to, the village installs the dark fiber, attaches, buys electronics and attaches it, and actually sells internet service directly as a village utility. And the third op, the fourth option, I'm sorry, is a lit network with electronics, but the village leases out capacity to private providers, so the village would not be selling any services directly to the public. I, I know I've kind of run through that, I just stopped for a second, asked if there's any questions about those before I go on. Okay, next, next slide. So, there's a couple of business model options. We looked at municipal retail, that is, that is where the village would, would actually sell internet service directly to the public in, in competition with the private sector. The, the second option is municipal wholesale, and there's, that, that would work for both the dark fiber or the lit fiber- the dark fiber or the lit fiber option. You can lease out, in the lit fiber, you can lease out capacity. Many other communities, uh, have taken this approach. Uh, in the dark fiber, you just lease out dark fiber pairs, and, and some communities have done that as well. So, we looked at four different cost analyses. The two were the full build-out of, of putting fiber on all the poles in the, in, in, in the village and passing by, uh, all homes and businesses. And two were a much more limited build-out. One, just, uh, putting, uh, dark fiber in a very small area of the downtown, primarily to serve businesses. And, uh, the, the last option was a variant of that, is the, the downtown dark fiber, but extending that into, uh, some of the nearby adjacent residential streets. There's a number of challenges the village would have if you decide to go forward. I, I talked about the alley clearing issues. We did get a, a cost estimate, uh, of about nine-hundred thousand dollars. The alleys, many of the alleys in town are, are, are very overgrown, and, and before fiber, an extensive fiber build could be done, you'd have to clear, uh, do an extensive clearing. Trimming back trees, trimming shrubbery, um, and I included some pictures. I, I've, I've visited a lot of communities in, in more than twenty states. I, I have to say, the alleys are pretty bad. And they are going to require some work, if you wanted to go forward with a fiber initiative. Excellent. Funding is going to be always important. You've got to figure out how to pay for it. A lot of communities think building the networks, the complicated part, that's pretty easy. You can hire a competent, uh, set of contractors to, uh, clear the alleys, put up the fiber, install the electronics. I think the chat, one of the challenges for the village would be, if you wanted to go forward, is determine how you're going to, to fund the project. You're looking at on the low end of about four, five-hundred thousand dollars for the limited downtown fiber build, up to four to five million dollars for a, a full community build-out. There's a variety of funding options. Bonding is certainly an option. Given that, that the, the village does not have a track record of doing this kind of utility service offering, I would advise that you, you get, talk to bond council very early on and get their advice about whether, uh, that's, that's really going to, you're going to be able to sell the bonds. It's the, another option that has become more popular is, is to actually do the equivalent of a, of a pass-by and tap fee, much the way water and sewer has been financed, where you assess each property, uh, for a portion of the construction cost to, to fund that. Some communities have done that and spread the, the billing, the properties out over a period of years, so you don't have quite as much, uh, the, you don't get the full, the property owners don't get the full, uh, bill in, in year one. You could always raise taxes, that's generally, uh, there's very few communities have taken that approach. Next slide. So, getting started, funding's an issue, alley clearing, easements, some of the, some of the alleys have been abandoned by the village, so in those areas where you needed to get on the poles, put the fiber on the poles, you would have to get easements for property owners. This is generally not too difficult, but it, it can, can, can require some expense.
But don't we already have an easement? If the poles are there, how can we not already have an easement?
You may not have an easement for telecommunications, you may only have an easement for electric service. Comes up, uh, a lot, a lot of utility easements, pole easements were put up thirty, forty, fifty, seventy years ago, nobody contemplated, uh, fiber.
Okay.
So, things have changed.
So, and is that a maybe, or we've definitely confirmed that?
I can tell you that there are places where we only have electric easements, it specifically says electric.
And is that, I mean, is, are those, you know, from before, when we were abandoning, or like even currently?
You mean the, the alley vacations?
Right, because I thought our practice was to make sure we had full access.
But now it is.
Okay, but it wa, so this was in the past?
Correct.
But access isn't necessarily having the easement, but...
Right.
Okay.
Um, market size would be an issue in terms of operations, whether you, depending on, and, and the operational costs, of course, would, would vary, depending on whether you do a, this very limited downtown versus a, a full build-out, and whether you did municipal retail versus municipal wholesale. But it's a relatively small market. We, we did a number of financial analyses, looking at each of the options, and if you did a full build-out, um, it looks like it would be very difficult to stay, keep this enterprise in the black, if you had less than fifty or sixty percent of the residents taking service. And that, so that may be, uh, one of the most important things to consider. I would not go forward with this unless you've got binding agreements from at, at least a, a majority of, or half the property owners to buy service, because you could build it. A lot of other community networks that typically only see, in, in, in communities where there is competitive telephone and cable service, they might see a take rate of thirty or forty percent. So, the operational costs need to be studied very carefully, and you need to make sure you, you have a supportive, the majority of the citizens who are going to be willing to buy this. It's not going to be less expensive than what's available now, it would probably be about the same price. It would certainly be a, a higher quality service, but it's, it's, it's not going to be a budget service if the village does it. There's, there's a certain amount of fixed costs you're going to have, that are independent of, uh, the, the number of subscribers, yes.
Did I see you estimated about seventy-five dollars a month?
Yes.
And that would just be for internet?
That's just for internet, yes. But a lot of people that are, are doing cord-cutting and getting all of their TV and video services over, over the internet, that trend has been accelerating, so the, I wouldn't, if the, if the village decided to go forward, I would not recommend trying to bring in a package of TV. It would be very difficult. A, because of the small market size, but B, there's some expense in, in providing that service and managing it, and I, I wouldn't get involved in that when the market is actually shrinking. The last, the last thing I would mention is, if you go forward, I do think the telephone and the cable companies will compete vigorously. We see this in other communities where, um, there is a community effort, a build-out. They're, they're going to, they're going to fight for market share. They typically are not interested, even if you did the wholesale model, we have rarely seen the incumbents, um, agree to lease capacity on the new network. Usually find, we usually find that other, other smaller providers in the, in the, in the area or the region do sign up and agree to use it, but, um, I, I don't think you could count on Spectrum or AT&amp;T agreeing to lease capacity, even though it's actually in their best interest. We just haven't seen it happen.
Yeah, I did want to ask about that, um, because I know that was on page three in your table. So, the, the idea that competitors would vigorously compete is just based on your experience from other situations?
Yes.
All right. Because there are situations where the incumbents haven't competed, from my understanding.
Well, well, we've already been contacted by, I mean, we've, we've already had two meetings with Spectrum. I think Spectrum has made it clear that they're going to compete.
I don't know, I, I just, I mean, but you didn't do any actual interviewing with those incumbents or anything?
No, I mean, I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, it varies from community to community, but we, we generally do see sometimes modest price decreases or improvements in service. Perhaps vigorously was too strong a word, but I, I would expect them to, if, if you did a full, particularly if you do a full build-out, I would expect them to respond in some way.
Andrew, when we met with Spectrum, they talked to us about a, a low-income option, that they were going to...
That's right.
Hopefully this fall, make available to the community, um, where you would be able to, at your home, if you couldn't afford internet and could show your income level, you would get it for a lesser price. How would that affect, do you think, the take rate?
Well, I, I, I think it will affect the take rate and, and would have a negative impact. I, I can tell you what we've seen, and we've had the opportunity over the last twenty years to look at a lot of community build-outs. Residential buyers of, of telecommunications services are very price-sensitive. Often, it's, you know, even if the, the community, uh, offering is, is only a few dollars more than the competitive offering, people are, are, particularly if they're on a fixed budget, uh, or, or have, uh, limited means, they're not going to buy the community service, even if it's only five or ten dollars more. So, if there's, if, if the incumbents are offering, uh, low-income families a, a discounted rate, which is a good thing, um, that is going to affect the take rate.
So, could you talk a little bit about this idea of us installing the fiber, the dark fiber option, and, um, because you've said that AT&amp;T and Spectrum are not going to put fiber in Yellow Springs?
Not, no, it's not likely, yeah.
So, so if our citizens want fiber, if they want higher speeds, some, we're going to have to do it, so, um, but you said that the AT&amp;T and Spectrum would likely not collaborate with us. What if we went into it with one of them and said, "We're going to do this to provide higher-speed service for our residents and businesses"? Could we potentially do that? And then, and then how, how do we pay for that? You know, it's, it's almost as expensive, or is, is practically the same price, because we're installing the same fiber. So how exactly do we pay for that?
I, I'm, I'm not sure. Are you, are you saying you would, the village would, would build the fiber, but then try to partner with?
Right.
Um, you, you can always ask them if they'd be interested in that. I mean, I, I've, I've, I've never seen the incumbents agree to partner with a community enterprise. I've never, it, it's never happened.
Can you, can you postulate reason for that?
Um, you know, I, as I said, it's, it's really in their best interests. I mean, you take it, you take an incumbent provider who says, you know, "We can't make a business case to upgrade the fiber in your community", and the community says, "We'll build fiber and, and let you use it for a reasonable fee". They get to offer improved services to their own customers, and they, someone else pays for all the capital costs. It's a, to me, it's always been a very compelling business case to partner with the community. I used to work for AT&amp;T once upon a time. The, the incumbent providers believe that, um, they have a certain, uh, way of doing business, and have, have never shown any interest in, um, partnering in this way.
Have you seen any change now that it's charter, now under charter? Just in, in their business model?
We're, we're working in a, in Bozeman, Montana, right now. Bozeman, uh, the, the community built, formed nonprofit, built the network, charters, the cable provider, and we've talked to them many times. They've never shown any interest in it. They should, because there's, there's five providers on the Bozeman Community Network, and they're, they're taking charter business customers away every day.
Can you give us a little bit of a reality check on the service we do have? I mean, clearly, the, the survey came out very strongly supporting community fiber, but could, could you kind of compare where we are and what we have now, what our service is now, with maybe what some of the other communities that have done community, or have done municipal fiber, why they've done it, and what our situation is comparatively?
Most communities that do it, uh, do it primarily for economic development reasons, not, not for residential demand. That's not always the case, but, but I would say a majority of community projects, uh, have, have a, a goal of either retaining existing businesses that have said, "If you can't improve internet service here, we're going to have to pick up our jobs and move", or they feel like they're losing, uh, business and jobs to other communities that, that have better, more competitive, uh, pricing and, and internet and data options. There have been, uh, one of the projects that we've, we've worked with for a number of years is in rural New Hampshire, was about twenty towns that actually got a federal stimulus grant back in two thousand and eleven. And that was, that was driven primarily by residential needs. The difference between there and here is that in, in most of, it was about a quarter of the state, most of those very small communities had no cable service at all. They had very, very poor DSL, maybe some of the worst DSL in the country. And so, um, there was a, a, a lot of motivation to improve, uh, particularly internet access, because there was no cable option. The, the, there's, in, in terms of price, uh, the prices here, particularly for cable, are not bad. They're a little below the national average, and the service, the service is about equivalent to what we see in other communities.
Any other questions from council before we open it up to the community?
Um, I wanted to clarify, uh, when I read about the limited build-out focused on the downtown, two questions. There was a number in the executive summary that looks like it's a mistake. It said, um, might start at, it reads one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, but was that just supposed to be two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand?
Uh, it, it may be, it's, it does sound like a typo.
All right, it looks like a typo. And then, um, I, I was also curious about, um, why you only focused on dark fiber for the limited build-out and not lit fiber?
Uh, it's, it's really an issue of capacity for village staff. There's a lot more, uh, day-to-day management involved. If you're, even have a small amount of electronics, you could certainly, um, outsource some of that, but the, the initial cost is going to be higher, and the ongoing responsibilities are going to be more significant. I, I'd be happy to look at that, but I, I, it, it's a very small market for the downtown businesses. We have found generally that, that smaller retailers are also very price-sensitive, and, um, whether it's lit or dark, I, I think even the downtown, you'd want to do, you'd want to have a conversation with, with, and, and be reasonably confident that a majority of the business owners are, are willing to say, "Yes, if you build this, I am going to buy services off this network, whether it's lit or dark".
I do have a question. When you're looking to the, into the future, is predicting how this, how the service will evolve, um, if, if we did our own system, which sounds pretty expensive to me, is there a chance that we would be outdated in the not-too-distant future, in some way that it would be irrelevant?
No, the, the good thing about fiber is, it's, it, it really future-proofs you. It's, it's got a, a, a service life of a minimum of, of, of now about forty years. If it's well-maintained, it's going to last longer than that. If there's fiber that the telephone company's installed in the seventies and early eighties, it's still in service and working. You know, it's, it, it sounds expensive, it, it depends on how you, how you spread out the money. If, if you could collect, um, a, a dollar a day from, from every citizen for a few years, um, you, you could pay for the whole system. So it's really about financing, that's why I say the funding part is the bigger challenge, in figuring out how to come up with it. I mean, compared to water and sewer, it's a bargain. Um, you know, I, people say, "Well, isn't putting fiber on poles or putting fiber in the ground difficult?" difficult?" It's like, no, what's difficult is, is putting in sewer, you know, digging 10-foot-deep holes that are four feet wide limestone to get sewage to run downhill. That's difficult. So I, it's certainly, it's certainly possible to do something good here, but you're going to have to think about it very carefully. And the, the alley clearing, I mean, if, if you, if the community's willing to go forward to do that, and it is, I think, to me, partly a public safety issue that needs to be done anyway, it's just a matter of hiring someone to do it. The finance is the most important part. So you've got to know how you're going to pay for it and make sure that you're going to have enough customers to operate it in the black. So it comes down to those two things.
Yeah. Do you have any opinion on urgency based on federal policy and what's happening right now?
It's strictly my opinion. I have no special channel to Washington, but I would, I would not expect that you're going to see much money coming from Washington for fiber or broadband initiatives.
And what about in terms of shutting it down?
Shutting?
Preventing communities from moving forward with these kind of projects?
That, that's, I don't think that's going to happen, but, you know, there's, there's, I, we've never regarded that as a particular problem because you could, if you wanted to do this, you could form a community nonprofit. And the, the funding becomes a little more challenging, but there's, there's plenty of ways to get around any legislative initiatives. In Ohio, I mean, there's a lot of communities that are already doing this in Ohio. I would be surprised, again, it's just my opinion, I would be surprised in Ohio that if you saw a state-led initiative to limit the ability of localities to do it because there's just, there's, Ohio's really a leader in the nation in, in terms of, of community initiatives.
Where in Ohio does it happen?
Columbus, Hudson, yeah, there's, there's, there's at least a half a dozen communities that are doing this.
When we started looking into it, my sense of the cost, both the build-out cost, but especially the monthly cost, was considerably lower than what you're telling us, so it's disappointing.
If you look around the country, whether it's a community initiative or it's a private sector initiative, you're not going to see anything below $65 or $70 for fiber internet. And in many places, it's, it's more like $90 to $100. It's, it's a premium, it's a premium service.
So what's, what's?
Now, having said that, I mean, the thing to remember is a lot of people are cutting the cord on their cable. So in fact, if you put in a premium fiber service and people feel more comfortable getting rid of their cable TV, they might, and this is part of the case of making, making the case to citizens and convincing them that this is worth doing, is you, you have to do the math for them and say, "Look, yes, this, you may be paying $45 a month for internet right now, and yes, it may be 75, but you will have the option of, of, here's all the, the TV programming that you're paying 65, 75, 85 dollars a month for, you can now get for 20 or 30 dollars a month over the internet." So there's, there's a net savings involved in doing it.
But you can get that anyway. I mean, I'm just getting internet. I don't have cable. I'm, I could get the Netflix, I mean, I do get Netflix.
Sure. And that's, that's absolutely true, which is, which is one of the problems. It's, you have to compete against the private sector. It's one of the issues very broadly with, with, with community initiatives like this. It's not like water or sewer where you, the, the municipality has a natural monopoly and everybody, you know, everybody that wants to flush their toilet is going to buy sewer service from you. You can't make people take a telecommunications service. And that's why a lot of communities only get a 30 or 40 percent take rate. And it's been higher. Some communities have done, have done much better than that. It's, it's, it's often in communities where there's no cable service or very poor cable service.
I'd like to suggest that we maybe go another 10 or 15 minutes on this and then move on because we've got a lot on our agenda.
We have a lot on our agenda, but this isn't important.
It is.
And we've got, I think we need to hear from our fiber.
Yeah. But I just wanted to try to put a timeframe on it so that...
Yeah, let's, I mean, let's try to be done by quarter till.
Yeah, thank you.
Folks, I'm gonna, I'm looking to the fiber group, SpringsNet. I assume you guys want to have something to say? You're eating up valuable time, guys.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Matt Cole. I'm the, you'll remember me as the financial guy making that presentation about how long ago. So I did, you know, most of the numbers with my friends Saturday mornings for about a year and a half. And I just want to, in a shotgun blast kind of way, I made a couple of notes and then I'll, I'll move on and give some time to them. The first thing I noticed just listening to Mr. Colehill is that, you know, there's a lot of comparison to other communities and honestly, I don't think that he, maybe he really completely understands us. Everybody that I talked to would rather put a fork in their eye than call Time Warner Customer Service. I think there's a big local push here, you know, and a, and a willingness to pay for something that everyone needs, but see the money go to our local government as opposed to Time Warner or someone else. One of the key points of the financial model was that we have some good idea about take rates because people would sign up beforehand. We, in my plan, we had like eight, three months upfront. And with that kind of thing rolling for a few months before anything really took off, you know, maybe we could get a 40 percent take rate before even the dollar was spent on constructing the thing. Would also support or, or help out a bond initiative. Other people or investors would be happy to buy the bond if they already knew that 40 percent of the village had prepaid for a service they may not get for a year. I, I think that any obstacles that come along, like the trees and other things, there are solutions for those. And I think that with a project this size, there has to be mass coordination and communication and overcoming lots of these little obstacles. I think, let's see, there was a comment here, "Same price, higher quality is the only reason many of the people in the village need to unplug their cable and buy a local internet service." I think that any competitors or, you know, any price dropping, that would just help the village. Anybody that can't afford what we thought would be $40 a month with minimal increases over a 20-year period of time, that would just benefit any, anybody that wasn't making enough money to pay for that $40. So I think it'd be great to see Spectrum start charging $30 to compete with our $40 price or $45 price. I'm going to call time out there and just hand it over to Scott.
All right. I think I can do this in three minutes. My name is Scott Fife, a village resident, member of the SpringsNet Committee, and I am not speaking on behalf of SpringsNet tonight because we've not had a chance to meet and I wouldn't presume to do that without a chance to collaborate with my colleagues. And Dr. Colehill is absolutely right. Careful thought absolutely would have to go into an, an initiative like this. We fully understand that. I would like to just say on our behalf that we literally spent hundreds and hundreds of person-hours in this endeavor for almost two years prior to undertaking this survey. With that said, I, I would like to reserve the right to perhaps come back to council at a future time after we've had a chance to meet and, and offer some thoughts on this again. I would like to say just a couple of things tonight. And I believe there are six thoughts I would just like to ask the community to keep in mind as we proceed about this. And I'd like to begin with a quote. I'm sorry. I had it right here. Anyway, I'm, I'm reading from the, "Today, we estimate that nearly $4 million per year is put in envelopes by residents and businesses in the town for telecom services and mailed out of Yellow Springs and out of the state. And over, over a 30-year period, the estimate is that $114 million leaves the village to go to AT&amp;T, Time Warner, EarthLink, and other providers of telecom services." That information came from the response of Design 9 to our, our RFP for this, this study. So that's the source of that information. And that would be my first thought that I'd offer that we keep in mind, that $114 million is quite a chunk of money for a village of 3,500 people. And I would suggest that that's plenty of reason to, to look very hard at this. A couple of other things. We all know there's been a lot of talk lately about the cost of living in Yellow Springs, affordability of things. We believe that with all of the rising costs of other utilities, this would give the village a chance for a win, a chance to offset some of those, those other projects. Economic development is of course of keen interest to many of us, and we're all interested in clean and environmentally responsible economic development. High-speed internet service is all about that kind of thing. Finally, last, last couple of points I'd make. I have no monopoly on this information, but I believe, I, I ask myself frequently, "Why is Yellow Springs an electric utility?" I don't know, another town around here of this size that's their own electric utility. But I believe I have an answer, and, and in large part, I got it from Johnny Burns after the last meeting, where he told me that 93 percent of our electricity is created from non-renewable sources. Nobody else can say that, and, and that to me...
From renewable.
I'm sorry, from renewable sources. I apologize for that. That's, that's tremendous. And to me, that justifies all, whatever kind of hassles come along with that, being able to do that. Why are we our own water utility? Well, I tried to follow the debate about the water situation closely, and I know that a lot of thought and a lot of points were made about the quality of our water and how we didn't want to have to take somebody else's water that might have chemicals coming into the watershed. I value those kinds of things as a citizen, and I appreciate the work that council and the community has done about that. With all the talk of net neutrality and the internet service providers selling your browser history to, to whomever they want, the current political climate, I think, would give us a, a perfect reason to, to consider being our own internet service provider, is we would be in charge of that kind of thing. And I believe that that kind of control over our own destiny is what, is what makes this such a great place to live. So those are six thoughts I would just like to, to ask people to keep in mind as we proceed with this debate. And I, I trust council will be receptive to perhaps hearing some more from us. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Very, very pleased. I am Thor Sage. I think that the, that the work that Dr. Colehill has done does require a bit more discussion, and we, we, I know the SpringsNet group have a lot of questions for Dr. Colehill that we may not have had, had an opportunity to ask. A couple of notes. I don't know that the fiber project should take the full brunt of all the tree trimming challenges that the village has. This is, this is an issue that has to be addressed regardless of whether or not a fiber project goes forward. The cost for, for a fiber-based utility service in communities that we looked at, even at our own fiber forum, back two years ago, April, we talked, we, one of our guests was from Sandy, Oregon, who was offering, what was it, 100 meg service at $39, fiber-based service. So there's, there's a lot, there's a great deal, there are a great number of examples of, of very affordable fiber-based service when municipalities take the initiative. I don't understand the, the cost per household. We, as the SpringsNet group, put together, or we were able to research and, you know, discover that the average cost per fiber to the home implementations is somewhere between 13 and $1,800 a home. But everything I'm seeing in this current report indicates that we're looking at somewhere between 21 and 26, and I, and I'd have to do a lot more math in order to get to that. And I, I would ask if we've talked, you know, if we've talked to any fiber-to-the-home vendors, there are, they do exist. There's a company called ACDNet that's operating out of Lansing, Michigan, and Dublin, Ohio, that specializes in fiber-to-the-home service, that might be a good partner for a project like this. And I want everybody to know that the village of Cedarville is looking at fiber-to-the-home. They're actually, they've actually gone so far as to establish a co-op. And that's going to be their model, is to run it through a co-op. But there's, there's a lot of activity in the region and possible partners. So that's all I have. Thank you.
And Cedarville has a university that's doing, that's helping to supplement what's happening in Cedarville.
I...
Cedarville University.
They're participating in the discussion, certainly.
Dan?
I'm a member of SpringsNet, but I'm saying this on the cuff. We haven't had a meeting, so it's not, these are my own opinions. I appreciate Dr. Colehill's study, very interesting, except I think there's a certain, when he says internet, fiber internet service versus what Mary Ann thinks is her DSL service as being quick equal, you know, if you get it from AT&amp;T or Time Warner or Spectrum versus getting a fiber. There's a qualitative difference between the two in terms of speed and reliability, upload and download, much more for the business. And being a single, you know, let's say only one person in the home, maybe DSL works fine. But when you have a, a modern family with a lot of IP internet devices, I don't think it, it cuts very well. And so let me ask you, council, how many, I see on my utility bill, trash service. How many people does the village employ for trash services?
Dan, why don't...
You don't? Okay.
Can you kind of summarize?
So, pardon me?
Just summarize. I mean, I, I don't know that we have time to be answering your questions.
Well, the point is, Dr. Colehill was talking about village staffing for internet fiber service. We wouldn't really have it any different than we would for trash. We'd contract it out, have it taken care of that way. I don't think there's, you know, the potential to lose the need maybe for more contract administration, but that's what I was, I, you know, I think these little fine details need to be further threshed out. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dan.
Any questions for me?
Well, I'm assuming that we're going, we're not dropping this discussion right now.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more from SpringsNet.
That's great.
Tim Barhorst. I'll keep this real short. I just want to suggest that we reconvene the managers advisory board and discuss the presentation in detail and come up with some recommendations for council that way.
I would, I would say that that makes sense. I mean, we, we did a step of, we've invested, how much in this study?
$48,000.
$48,000 in the study. So, I mean, we certainly aren't going to just drop it, but we have to have a thoughtful approach for, for how we're going to go to the next step.
I like, I think that, has that advisory committee been on hold or?
Well, yes, we were waiting for the report, which I got last week and released. Actually, they got it just prior to the public getting it, after they got it, just shortly after council.
There's at least two things that I want to make sure are addressed. I mean, I have many others, and I think the advisory board will bring that up. Well, one thing is Thor mentioned it, and I, I remember Dan had also talked about closely evaluating what the alley clearing piece is all about, because that is almost a million, you know, at least in, in these projections from this report. And I think some good issues have been brought up about that. And I also want to understand better what this easement issue is, because it, it sounds like a big deal from the report, and I, I want to understand really what the implications are, if that is true. And I just want to make sure we have a policy in place that we will always, when we abandon, get an easement on telecommunications, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's a, if there's a pole in there, if it doesn't have an existing easement, we can certainly make sure that happens.
Okay.
Because Johnny and his crew... Because Johnny and his crew need access to it anyway.
All right.
But I'd like to address a couple of things, just real quick.
Go ahead.
First of all, Scott, you made a comment about the profit from a fiber network potentially being $114 million a year. I'd just like to point out that if this is run as a utility, any profit from that goes back into the utility. It does not go into the, it does not go into the general fund, and I don't want people to have that misconception, because if it's run as a utility, it's very specific that enterprise fund profits only go back into the enterprise fund. And as in relation to the tree trimming along the alleyways, would it be done anyway? Yes, but at a much substantially slower rate, because Johnny would add it on to his annual $100,000 a year, try to catch this kind of thing, type of thing. So, I just wanted to cover those two things really quickly.
Okay. And I guess, you know, the one thing I would like, I would really like you guys to concentrate on, the fiber committee to concentrate on, is the economics, is this initial startup cost. How do we pay for it? How do we fund it initially? And I would agree that we could potentially get a 50% to 60% take rate, but we're also talking about asking people to potentially come up with $1,500 out of pocket, $1,800, $750 out of pocket. I mean, how does that initial, how does that initial installation happen? So, you know, explain that to, you know, help us understand that, and how those finances kind of continue out over, you know, a five- to 10-year cycle. Anything else?
Well, I did want to say, I noticed related to that, that the best ROI was on a lit fiber municipal build-out from this report, and that was in year five, so I think that's an interesting thing to tease out.
I just wanted to say, I thought the presentation was very clear, and I know people want to analyze it and, you know, look at the numbers carefully and so on, but I appreciate, I forget your name.
Andrew.
Andrew, just clarity with which you presented your material.
Okay. Thank you so much, Andrew. Okay, what are we moving on to? Where's my agenda? Discussion regarding US Bank accounts. There was a letter I had received, actually, it was on my table at the last meeting, but I had just received it, I just opened it, from US Bank that made it into the packet, explaining their policy about investments. They did, they did not provide, they are quick to say that they did not provide project financing for the Dakota Access Pipeline. They do have a relationship with one of the companies involved in the project, and then on the back, they had information about how their investments are socially sustainable, do support socially sustainable, or sustainable businesses, economic sustainable business practices, and environmentally sustainable business practices. So, Mary Ann, I know that you, in addition to this letter, you did ask, I think, for this to be brought back as a discussion item at the last meeting.
Did we talk about it at the last meeting?
No, we didn't at all.
Okay. Well, yeah, originally, citizens, a number of citizens came to council requesting that the village withdraw its funds from US Bank.
Close the door.
No, you can't close the door, but you can ask them to stop, talk more quietly.
Because we were told that they were a primary funder of the Dakota, North Dakota pipeline. And when we, so, we did write a letter to US Bank stating that this was a concern. We sent it to the CEO and the Ohio District Manager and the local branch manager. So, the letter that we received is in reference to that, indicating that they are not a funder of that pipeline project. But what we also found out was that, one, probably all banks are funding these kind of things. For example, West Banko is funding fracking, which would be a logical bank for us to go to, but that is no better, and they're doing it in this area, too. The credit, the credit union's not, doesn't have the capacity to handle our funds. In US Bank's favor, it is a local, I mean, it's not a local corporation, but it does have a local presence in Yellow Springs, and staff, it's very easy for staff to go there and use it. So, I had sent an email out to the people who had requested that we remove our funds from US Bank, explaining what the issue was and asking for any suggestions, and I got none. So, in terms of that reason, at this point, myself personally, I don't see us removing our funds from US Bank.
Right, and I think we had had our, we had asked our treasurer and finance director, although since Melissa was on leave, it looks like she has a whole pile of stuff. So, I mean, can you briefly address what?
Yeah, I had printed out a few extra of these for anybody in the audience that might want to take a look. It's just a, it's a brief four-page document that actually, the credit goes to Rachel McKinley. Since I was off, this wasn't something that I had the time to be able to do, and I knew that the community and the council were interested in some more information, and so Rachel was kind enough to do some research for me. So, basically, what she did was, she took a look at the three banks that were in town. There's West Banko, US Bank, and then the credit union, and she got some information off of a website called banklocal.info, and it kind of compared a number of different items, including local impacts, small business lending, their ownership, their size, where they're headquartered out of. She also took a look at connections to the fossil fuel industry. She also has some data in that regard. And in her conclusion, US Bank really did make the most sense. West Banko had a higher concentration of loans within the energy sector. Huntington Bank, she also looked at, which wasn't in Yellow Springs, and we do use them for investments, which she, she proposed that we keep our investments separate from our general banking, so Huntington was out, and as Mary Ann indicated, the credit union can't handle the capacity that we would need them to. US Bank provides us with a number of services, like lockbox payments. There's an, whenever you mail in your utility bill, if you actually look at the address, it goes to Cincinnati, and that's a lockbox, and they process all of those payments for us, and it's a lot of payments on a daily basis, and it relieves our staff of having to do that manually. So, for example, the credit union doesn't offer lockbox payments, so that would make us increase our staff if we had to go with a bank that didn't offer a service like that, which wouldn't make financial sense at the end of the day. So, basically, all in all, based on Rachel's research, it still makes sense to remain with US Bank.
The question, one question I have is for the people who, you know, were really advocating this, and I know they referenced other communities that had decided to move their monies, and I was curious, you know, where they moved their monies to and how they made that decision, so I wondered if maybe they could get us that information. I would be interested in that.
I do know that larger communities might have more banking options that would be local. One of my main concerns is any of our staff, myself or either of the two clerks-
Yeah, I appreciate that issue as well. But I also was curious, because, you know, I just was curious, you know, how they came to their decision and what they found out about the decision they made, where they moved it, just to understand, you know, how they were weighing, or if there's some, you know, it would just be interesting to know that.
Right, I think bottom line, I think for citizens who are concerned, I feel like we heard them, we responded, and we were making a, an educated decision to stick with US Bank at this point.
Yeah, unless they have more information that would give, that would give us some weight, direction to go, that would make some sense, you know? That's the question.
Well, as I said, I did send an email out to probably about 20 people, and asking for more information and didn't hear any. And I've talked to MJ, who's really leading this.
And you said they've seen this response from US Bank?
No.
Okay.
No, they haven't seen that.
So, maybe we should try to-
Well, because I'm curious, you know, related to that, what is the other side? Because there seem to be some pretty strong conviction.
But I, it was on the agenda, we announced it was going to be on the agenda, the agenda was published. I mean, I know it's tough for people, but I think it is a, it is an item that we've been discussing for about, at almost every meeting, at least it's been mentioned, and citizens who are very concerned about it probably have had an opportunity, and they had an opportunity to see this letter in the packet. So, hopefully, they have seen it. And, you know, we're not, we're not, we're making a decision right now that we're not going to make any changes. That doesn't mean that we won't continue to hear information that people might bring to us. Next item on the agenda is the draft police chief job description, the end of last meeting, or during, at the last meeting, that's one of the items that we asked village manager to prepare. It actually had been prepared, she worked with Pat Dewees and Janet Mueller to draft this, so we'll turn it over to her to review what she's come up with.
As you can see, the primary job description is fairly lengthy, and we put quite a bit of time into this, Pat, Janet, and myself. In addition to that, I've included the summary job description in there. The reason being that normally you advertise a shorter job description that provides a length to the more extensive and detailed job description. Now, that said, the summary job description is also kind of lengthy, because we felt that there were some very important things that needed to be included in that summary job description. But we were very careful to include the inclusiveness that we felt was very important in Yellow Springs for all communities, particularly the LTGPQ community. And we also included the citizen involvement that we felt was important, the cultural values of Yellow Springs, we tried to incorporate into that, and we brought in the thoughts from both the Justice System Task Force and the input that they've gotten from the citizens, as well as the 365 group, and the input that they've gotten from the citizens. And we tried to put all of that together into a pretty inclusive job description, and that's what you have in front of you.
Well, first of all, thank you for everyone who worked on this. I think they're very well-written.
Very good.
I have a few questions and suggestions, but I was really pleased to see them. One question I have is, what is the profile and challenge statement? I didn't see it. Is it a separate document?
I don't remember that part. Pat, do you remember? I was thinking it had to do with the vision statement when I read it, which now is being worked on. Oh, I see it, I see it at the top. You know what? I apologize, because that is probably left over from, part of this job description came from the job description that was prepared when I was hired, and that is probably left over from that, and we did not catch it. So, thank you.
Oh, okay, that's mentioned in both of those documents. And what is the one fleet management property position as part of the police department?
That is, do you know Ken Nets? Ken handles the fleet management, which is all of the vehicles, making sure they're serviced properly, that the vehicles are in good shape and able to run. He also manages the property room, which is the found property or the recovered property from, you know, things that have been stolen that are recovered by the PD.
And that's a full-time position?
No, it's a part-time position.
Oh, okay. I did think maybe in the application part that we might mention that the population, that we are a tourist town, you know, so that in the summer, and especially on weekends, the population increases, I mean, the number of people here.
I would prefer the words destination.
Whatever. Whatever. And maybe also mentioning that we are responsible for patrolling Glen Helen. There were a couple type of things where it says city police, needs to be changed to village, but basically, I thought, I thought it was really well-done.
And the only other thing I noticed is, is the ideal can, it may be in more places, but I noticed it especially in the ideal candidate section, is that there seems to be going back and forth between using the term local policing and community policing.
I thought we caught all of those.
And that happened, I mean, that's happening with the statement, the vision statement, and maybe we need to decide what we want those words to be-
Either local or village. I think we moved away from community.
Yeah, we thought we had caught all of those, because they did say community policing previously, and we thought we had caught all of them. I also wanted to say, I thought it was, it's a very well-done document, and I thought you guys did a great job of sort of capturing the, what the village is about and what it is we're looking for, so I thought it was very good.
So, I also appreciate the work that's been done. I have a couple different recommendations. I think the references to the local policing, village policing standards, and vision are great, but I guess I'd love to see concrete references in the job description rather than directing people to another document. I mean, we've got so much powerful language that was worked on. I think that that could really flesh this out in a way that makes it more clear what is different about being the chief in Yellow Springs. And then I thought about some specific examples, you know, we've talked a lot about the importance of things like CIT training, implicit bias, those sorts of things could be referenced directly in this job description. And I guess I'd also like to see a stronger statement about things like LGBT and that sort of thing, just to really drive home, you know, what our village values are. So, I think everything's good, but I would just like to see that stuff in the job description itself, and I think we already have that language, so.
Do you want to do some editing?
I usually get to, right?
I mean, sometimes to expect somebody else to jump into what-
I'm not, anytime I make a comment, I'm willing to do the work, so I've always shown that.
Would you prefer that, or have at it?
Brian?
You're better at putting in what you're talking about than me trying to do it and going back and forth with you. Quite the time saver, so.
How does citizens citizen comment on the, just on the, on the chief description, job description? Okay. Are we ready to move on to the next item, which is the draft hiring process that we also asked Patty to put together?
Yep. I am.
So, I mean, I think we really kind of left the last meeting with the option of two or three potential processes, one being a full external search, which is something that was talked about as of January 3rd, as being important to the community. There's been a lot of support for the current chief, and so there was some discussion of having, just of doing an internal posting foregoing an external process, doing an internal posting. So, this particular process that- So this particular process that Patty prepared would be the full-blown search for external candidates and internal candidates.
Well, I, for one, I've, you know, I've read that over, and I am still of the opinion and of the feeling that we should just conduct an internal search and do that as quickly as possible. Again, I think we, you know, given the fact that we have resolved a lot of issues that have taken place since New Year's Eve, and I think folks have stood up, that were involved and did what we thought was the right thing. And now I think it's time for us to move forward. So that's why I'm saying that I would just like to see an internal search and have Patty come up with a timeline on how she thinks that could happen and so forth.
I think we may be able to come up with that. If all of council is in agreement or has other comments to make, I think maybe we could come up with that. And if speed is desired, we probably need to come up with a timeline, maybe while we sit here.
Well, I'd like to speak to this. If the rest of council wanted to do a full search, I would support that. There are risks regardless of what path we take, there are risks. And some of those risks, we don't even know what they are. I think a value of doing a full search is that it's as comprehensive a process as we could have. And while I would imagine that we will end up with a local candidate, it does give us, if nothing else, the opportunity to compare people we have locally to people who aren't local. At the same time, as we've talked about this, it's clear that we've had non-local people for a couple decades and have done broader searches, and none of them have been, none of them have resulted in a candidate who was, who worked. And someone might look good on paper, and someone might look good in person as a potential candidate, but you never know. If you don't know someone, really, you never know how they're going to work out. So, I mean, I see things both ways, but my sense is that probably we'll end up just going local.
I guess, I also want to support a, just an internal search, I think, by our employee manual, which I understand is a little bit confused, and I think we need to clarify the language. I think it's best practice that when you are doing a hiring, that you, at a minimum, do an internal search. I think we should clarify that language so that's very clear. That is what we intend to do every time, is to post internally and that we do an internal search.
Yeah, and just to, you know, extend that, I would like to make sure that we fix that language ASAP. Because, you know, I think there, you know, if we focus on what the intent of the personnel manual is, I think I would agree that it is, that at a minimum, we post jobs internally. And we've all spoken to it being a best practice. I had another thought, but I'm not sure what it was right now.
Well, I'm definitely in...
Oh, I know it. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that in this process, well, I guess one thing that seems pretty clear to me is a general consensus among the community that we want someone local. So I think that also validates this decision. But in particular, I want to make sure that the process that we do have maximizes the ability for citizens to provide input, ask questions of the candidates, and that sort of thing. So that would be my recommendation.
So I'm agreeing with everything that's been said. I would like to, to post for internal candidates. And I would actually like this to move forward as quickly as possible. I would like if, say by June 5th, if we could possibly have this decision made and have legislation by June 5th. So that would mean, that would mean we've got a busy month of May. Patty, do you have some, I mean, how quickly can you?
I can post tomorrow, but depending on how much wordsmithing Brian wants to do with...
Do we need to wordsmith the job description?
Okay. I can, I can...
Yeah. My understanding about the job description is that, I mean, it's important to formalize what our chief in Yellow Springs is all about, so.
Yeah, I can, I can take the job description tomorrow and, you know, take out the typos about the profile and challenge statement and make sure it says local policing and village. I can get that posted, and then I would say if you post tomorrow, you need to leave it for a week, at least. I think the manual says two days, but I don't like that number. I don't think it's fair because the officers rotate shifts. So I would like to leave it until, oh, if I post tomorrow, May the 10th, perhaps, and then have a review of the applications. We could do interviews the week of the 16th. I think we need to, we need to talk about the process. If we're going to post only internally, what do we want the process to be? Because that's going to determine the rest of the timeline after that. One thing that I think Judith had mentioned at one point was a process that they had used previously, where citizens, each council person chose a citizen to be part of the interview process. I think that it's important that the public have the right to ask questions of the candidates in a public forum, perhaps a meet and greet section like we had the last time. Input from council on this?
That's what I'd like, well, go ahead.
You know, I like the way we did yours, because I signed it, but...
I'm assuming you don't want to take the full two days, though.
Right, yeah. And, but anyway, I'd like to kind of facilitate both. I'd like to suggest that we, you know, after we get the applications from prospective individuals, that we have a community get a chance to greet the applicants, to interview them in an open forum whereby they just throw questions out to them, okay?
With mediators?
With a mediator to control it, so that the community will get a chance to kind of see how our chief would respond to open questions. Have a time period for council, for council to interview the folks, the candidates, and then kind of have a meet and greet where the citizens can chat one-on-one. We gather the information, we feed it to Patty, and Patty comes back with a recommendation. Again, trying to do it as quickly as possible.
I mean, I do think we would want to have an interview.
Well, that's what I...
So council interview first?
Yeah.
Whatever way that...
Council and staff.
Patty, I would think that would be an important part of it. But a public venue where it's going to be internal candidates, these are going to be police officers who run a work in our department. I think it'll be a great opportunity for any applicants to speak to their vision for our department. And so I think that could be really great and interesting, and so that would be good. Meet and greet sounds fine. Yeah, we obviously would need another, to have also an interview with Patty and the council who's going to participate.
We could conceivably, I mean, I'm going to assume that there will be two to three candidates. So we could conceivably do this in one night, where council could have interviews. That would be, you know, candidate A, candidate B, candidate C. At the same time, then after the interviews are done, you could have the formal mediator, the, you know, the forum where the public gets to ask questions of the candidates, and followed by meet and greet. That way, if a citizen has a question that they want to ask, they can ask it during the forum, and if they're not going to be here, they can submit that, and we can give it to the mediators to present. So if council wants to expedite this, we could do it in one evening, but my suggestion is you choose an evening because we need to, we need to get it on the schedule if you want to have this done by June.
It's a challenging month because of the holiday, but let's just pick something in the middle of May 16th.
So there was talk about having each council person pick a citizen to be involved in the decision-making process.
I think we kind of moved on from that. I thought we moved on from that.
So the interviews would be just council, myself, and Melissa?
Yeah.
And then the citizens?
And then we hear from the...
So that was, I think, Mary Ann, that that was replaced by the open forum where the citizens could ask questions.
Well, I think that's two very different things, though. I mean, letting some, a citizen ask a question is different than letting some citizens be part of the decision-making process.
I, they, I... Yeah, let's stop and get some citizen input.
Can I just ask for a clarification? Because it wasn't clear to me. Did you mean that the moderated forum would be all two or three candidates in one place at one time? Okay, and then just to add to that, when you previously did that, there was a survey that everyone was handed out and that they could turn in, so that they did get, they did provide feedback that was collated and handed back, just to say...
And I think that's good to do.
One thing I want to say, when the process I was referring to, where we chose a citizen, they didn't ultimately, they weren't, they, that was when we hired Mark Kondaf as our village manager. And we did, we did an interview with them, we chatted, we had a conversation council did with the citizens, we chose a single citizen. But then, and I think the way we did it then, then we had the public forum, and then council with staff came into executive session. We didn't have citizens, you know, participating in the decision itself, which I don't think would be appropriate.
And I think this is a very different situation with, these are all going to be candidates that we all know well and that the community knows. In that situation, it was, they were all unknown candidates. Laura, I saw your hand up.
Just a clarification. Ordinance 242.02 says the chief of police shall be appointed by the village manager and shall serve at the pleasure of the village manager as provided by the charter. And when I read this, and I'm sure the chief, potential chief candidates would like to know, it sounds like instead of being an advisory board, this is being called a selection board, in that these, this group of people will be selecting the chief, when it's really, it seems like it's Patty's decision. It more seems like advisory to her. I just want to clarify the process.
And I think that is what we're thinking.
Yes, and this really...
We're making the recommendation.
Right, and this particular process isn't really even being discussed at all, because this is an external process. Pat?
But that's a good point. Thank you, Laura.
Just have a couple of comments. I wonder, you can't assume how many internal candidates? I mean, in the internal postings, sometimes people just want to practice even. You could have, you're not going to have the entire force, but you could have, you know, five people might show up, six. I mean, so what is the first sort of selection? I mean, in the full search, you would have, you know, 100 applicants would apply, and then you'd decide, you'd winnow it down in a selection process and say, well, these two, and then these are our finalists. And that is certainly a more efficient process. But I also think that considering the events of the last couple of months, that we do need to do some good thinking about citizen involvement and making the selection process and the decision-making process very transparent to people who's doing it.
Thanks, Pat.
Do you have a suggestion, Pat, about the...
I'd have to think some more about it. Well, I think, I think, I think Pat makes a good point about the potential number of candidates. So if there are more than three, you know, I could regroup with council individually, you know, each member, to discuss potential ways to proceed. I mean, I don't want to say we're only interviewing three, because then if we get four, you're only eliminating one. On the other hand, if you get five, you know, now you're getting into a lot of interviews.
But we would interview all candidates.
If that's what council wants, yes, but you're not going to do it in one night. You're not going to be able to do everything in one night, then.
Does the job description, I mean, will, we have looked at the job description as possible that that would, that that would be a limiting factor for candidates?
I feel like we should, I mean, we don't want to drag it out. On the other hand, I don't think we should be rushing. And so, yeah, I mean, I think Pat makes a good point. Just, I mean, are we going to interview everybody? Not necessarily. I don't think that would necessarily be the thing to do. And...
We'll have a meeting before, won't we have a meeting? We'll have a meeting on the 15th.
So depending on what day, I think somebody said the 16th, so you're only having it the day before.
Yeah, that...
It could be that you schedule one night for interviews and then do the public forum and meet and greet on a different night. That may be what we end up having to do if we get multiple candidates.
I agree. If we're only going to do an internal search, that's already taken months off this process. So let's do it as good as we can. And I don't think we need to have it done in a couple of weeks, even in a month.
Dave, I saw Dave's hand up first.
David Turner, I guess several have already said part of what I was going to say. I agree with what you were saying, Pat. I don't see a need to rush it, get it over with, but an extra few days, an extra couple of weeks, or even a month probably won't make any difference. And if you don't do a good job of this, a significant, significant number of people in the community are going to see the chief is tainted no matter what a great guy or gal he, they happen to be. So I think it's more important to take the time to figure out a process. This seems to be rushed and convoluted.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Pretty much what I was thinking, what you said just now. I think we should be very careful with the next candidate we choose because a lot of things are riding on it. We haven't had a lot of good luck. We have had some issues in town, some of them go back, some of them are maybe forgotten. We've made some advances, especially with CIT training. That could have been involved in my son's death, possibly, who knows? The thing is, this is very important to me and my family. My grandson, right now, is in for four years in a penitentiary. They just decided that. One of our police officers was involved in arresting him. They, the people said that he should get two years or three years for what he did. He wasn't helped very much. They, all he said, he should get seven years, to the prosecutor who recommended that. He's 22 years old. He didn't kill anybody, he didn't really hurt anybody, he'd... He did something stupid. Now, he has addiction like his father did. His father was murdered here. He's acting it out. He's not gotten the help in these last four or five years. I'm here to tell you, we need to do better. I'm here to say, this is not acceptable to just pick somebody, and we hope this will work this time. I think we should do well and make sure that we don't rush it, because it sounds like we're doing that. Okay, thank you very much.
Could you say your name?
My name is Udo Shing.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? So...
I'd like to make one comment, is that, you know, the process may seem like we're rushing it, but I personally have received many, many inputs from the community since the incident occurred on New Year's Eve. Okay? And I've also received a lot of positive inputs from the community in the direction that council has taken since that incident. Okay? And we are trying to come to closure. The closure is coming up with an individual that knows the community, and the community knows them, and being able to provide the service and also the direction to our department that we feel that we need. I'm willing to extend the schedule a couple of weeks, but I don't want it to go into late June or July, because to me, that's going to discourage our present members of our force that may be interested in the position. We have put a lot of pressure on our staff to try to help with the process. But they can only do it so long and so hard. And we need to provide them with the leadership that they need so that the community can move forward. And that's my push for getting the process done. And I feel that we can come up with a process that will involve those in the community that want to participate in the process so we can, so we can move forward. Again, I'm, myself, I'm very confident that we have the local resources, the local individuals that understand the community and can, can lead the troops and get back to what everyone has been calling in the past, the Jim McKee, the John Grody era. We have young individuals, I feel, and old also, that can get us back to that, that way of living, if you want to call it anything else.
How about, so Patty's, Patty suggested a May 1, well, today's May 1, a May 2 to May 10 job posting, to get the applications in. How about if we pick one date? If we get more than two applications, we cancel. We cancel, or we, you know, go forward and indicate that we want as many, as many internal candidates as are interested to apply. I would just, I wouldn't mind getting a date on the table. Maybe we put a date in the table and we decide if it's going to be, maybe council will just do interviews if there are more than two candidates, and then we'll schedule another, another meeting for the community, another opportunity for the community.
Could you potentially just select, go ahead and select two dates and then cancel the second one if you don't?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. Because at least then we're preparing.
My schedule is pretty restricted this month, but the 16th would work for me and the 30th are about, and then some Fridays, but I don't think anybody wants to do it on Friday.
Yeah, that's a lot to do on a Friday.
Those, those two dates work for me.
I'm flexible. They work for me.
Okay.
So we can talk about what?
I'm trying to think, is the interview, the interview would be first and then the, the public venue after that.
I think it might make sense, well...
Depending on how many candidates.
Yeah, considering the fact that those dates are pretty far apart, it would seem that we would probably do, maybe do the council interviews first and then maybe have the public one, rather than separate candidates.
Yeah, I was going to say, if I can't be to the, at the public...
You mean have the public interview on the 30th?
On the 30th, if there were multiple candidates, rather than separating them by two weeks.
But the other thing is, if we want it to be available to the community, then people, the community needs to have time to know that it's available. And if we're leaving it up in the air, then they're not going to know. I mean, if on the 10th we have more candidates...
But we can say that the 16th, I mean, the 16th is a firm meeting. We can say May 16th. Well, not necessarily, because if, go ahead.
Here is what I would suggest, is that because there was a suggestion about Judy said something about when the forum happened, people had response, you know, questions and comment cards with responses on them. My suggestion would be that council do the interviews on the 16th, no matter how many they have. Set the public forum and the meet and greet for the 30th. That gives us time to design, you know, a response card with the categories or the thoughts on it. It also gives the citizens time to think about the questions they want to ask at the forum, submit them ahead of time to the mediators. And if that's the case, we could likely either still have it by the June 5th meeting or definitely have it by the June 19th meeting.
That seems reasonable. Is there a reason you don't want to look at May 22nd, which is a fourth Monday?
I'm going to be out of...
Sorry.
But may I ask Judith, if we do the interviews on the 16th, I thought that you said that the public forum, you thought it would be okay if you were not at the public?
I don't think I, I absolutely need to be there now.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I feel that, I mean, this is part of the participation in the decision-making process is that public forum.
So we're set, it looks like we're set on May 16th for council interviews and May 30th for public, the public interview process.
Correct.
And we still have May 13, or May 15th, excuse me, May 15th meeting, if we want maybe to get some more public input on what that meeting on May 30th should look like. We still have some planning time for that. Any other comments from council, citizens, before we move on?
Then we should contact John Gudgel, I think, about getting some facilitators for the 30th.
Yeah, one of you two, yeah, whoever.
I'm sorry, Melissa needs to leave. What was that, the last?
Contact, meet the village manager.
I will take care of that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is some justice system task force recommendations to council. It looks like there are two recommendations in this particular packet. I see that Pat DeWes is here. Judith, I don't know if you or Mary Ann or who is going to be interesting.
Dave Turner is going to speak to the recommendation on the mayor's court.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
Okay.
I assume you all saw what was in the packet, so I'm not going to read it. It consists of text, charts, graphs, paragraph on the back of each one, explaining what each one was. Basically, we like the mayor's court, everybody likes the mayor's court, we want to keep it. So our recommendation is that there are limitations on the types of cases that can be heard, but for those that may be heard, we recommend the village manager direct the police to send all possible cases to mayor's court. That's our recommendation.
It's already been done, but okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first step. The next discussion is going to be about the question of prosecutor, which we're, the committee, the working group is suggesting, maybe called mediator. Dave and Al Schluter and I think Cindy's on that committee, and Steve McQueen are on that working group. And, but you guys in particular, you, Dave and Al, have looked into the other mayor's court, several other mayor's courts in the state, and their, the prosecutor role is being done in different ways, so we're going to be talking about that at our next meeting, kind of thinking about that next step, which, which I also know that Chris wants to, you know, have input on that as well. But we're going to be just getting information at our next meeting and then trying to, and then I was thinking maybe the next meeting after that, if you would be able to come to our committee.
Just the camera could show I'm nodding my head, yeah.
It's the second Tuesday of the month, so get it on your calendar.
Chief and/or Patty, do either of you have any, any numbers in just changes, uptick in use of mayor's court over the past couple of months?
I don't, I don't know, Chief.
No, it's actually been a little slower.
Can you come up?
Yeah, please, sorry.
Citations have been down since New Year's Eve a little bit. I think everyone's a little apprehensive and, but we, you know, we have sent out an email requesting that anything that can be placed in mayor's court be done so, and it has been happening. We just don't have as many citations written lately.
That is not a problem.
And could, is that something, Judith, that the task force could do is just, because there's this issue of confusion between what can be cited to mayor's court and what can't be? Could that be something that is summarized? And I don't know if that's something that would come from Chris, Patty, but just, just to get that out on paper.
Chief's got the booklet and it's...
Do you want to address this?
Yeah.
You don't want me to address it, but you asked.
Well, I appreciate it. The chief gave me this booklet labeled criminal. And I estimate that it's about fifty, let's see, about 30 typewritten eight and a half by 11 pages. So we spent the last several months in the justice system task force talking about, should we say, send everything to mayor's court, which is, I said, immediately, or send a generic list of kinds of things, or send the full list? I've had so much time discussing this that I'm not going to talk about it anymore. I'll let you guys work it out and I'll unmute this back.
The problem is, there seems to not be an electronic copy of that, because...
Don't sit down.
No. As my understanding is, is that there's not an electronic copy, and when you go to the Ohio Revised Code, it is very difficult to understand. It's not helpful at all.
And who needs to know this?
Well, I think it is helpful to know. I would like to know. Well, I think citizens, just because we, you know, we're kind of bombarded with complaints about the police citing things to ZENIA when maybe those things are being cited to ZENIA because they have to be. And so I don't like our officers being criticized for things that they have no choice over.
So something that's written down so that the, perhaps a booklet that your officers can hand to somebody and say, see right here, here's this website citation saying you have to go to mayor's court, or you, you may go to mayor's court, or, you know, you have to go to ZENIA, something like that?
Officer? Right. Well, so my question, Dave, is, so it sounds like there are, there's a long list of things that can go to mayor's court. What about the flip side, the things that cannot? Is that a concise?
Isn't that a bigger list? Is it murder, murder, awful stuff?
Any felony, and no felony court. Cases can go to mayor's court. There are very few felonies that are already come out of Yellow Springs.
I don't know, I don't know the numbers on that. My guess would be a lot.
Okay. Well, I would agree, if we could summarize on a page, we don't need to have every, you know, subcategory of offense of what can or can't go.
Right. Yeah, it's very easy, yeah, it's very easy to say, no felony cases can go to mayor's court. And those kind, I don't need to see all of the felony arrests. Yeah, I need, I just...
But some misdemeanors can have to go, right, Chief?
I'm sorry?
Some misdemeanors have to go to ZENIA, right?
Yes.
And some don't have to go to ZENIA.
Juveniles have to go to ZENIA.
And some, you know, and there's something about, you know, the, you know, there's a lot of confusion about first OVI versus not first OVI, right?
And, and so you just used the right word, confusion. And so where can...
You're asking the working group to, if you could somehow...
Maybe it's staff, maybe it's, I don't know if it's the JSTF. I mean, it's just information I would like our citizens to have, because it is a source of frustration for people and misunderstanding.
Let Chief and I get together, maybe we can come up with a list, so.
Well, one thing that I think is important, and one is, it all boils down in the end to officer discretion. So that's what hopefully the philosophy can change. Once you're past the legal, you know, decision, does this have to go to, you know, ZENIA or can it stay in mayor's court? Now we're at the officer using their discretion.
Well, and that's something, I know we discussed at our committee, and I have to say, I'm, I'm not entirely, Chief, I'm sorry, I'm not entirely convinced that's true, that we have to give that discretion. So that's something, that's a discussion that I, that I would like to, to get more clarity on.
It's always good to start with the ordinance book, and there is, chapter six has the general offenses that are in the Yellow Springs ordinance book. And there's a mirror image of those in the Revised Code, and it's, they're the same offenses. It's simply, it's simply a choice of the officers whether to charge it under the Revised Code, which goes to ZENIA, or charge it under chapter six, which comes to mayor's court. So for example, you know, for example, we had a citizen charged with criminal damaging of Yellow Springs property, Yellow Springs citizen, Yellow Springs witnesses. Where did that case go?
ZENIA.
Thank you. And the reason, and so, no, I don't, I think we can have a policy that if it can be charged into mayor's court, it is. If the mayor has a conflict because he knows one of the parties is related, the mayor then, it's on him to recuse himself and then work that out. But that's why you have them in your ordinance book, so they can be charged under your ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. I'd like to say that this recommendation, like probably most of the recommendations coming out of the Justice Task Force, is not simple. And it's also 20 of 10, and I don't think that we're going to iron it out right now. So I have a suggestion for all of the recommendations, which is that we create a working document book that puts the recommendation in, has it come to council, what's the process? And Brian, probably you're good at some kind of graph thing, so that we have everything, but everything is going to have, need more work probably. I mean, this is a good example, even in the thing, we don't know if we're going to have a prosecutor. We don't have restorative justice now. I mean, there are lots of things for all these. But if we can start putting things in a book and saying, this is where it is, and then, then we'll have everything, and at some point, everything will get ironed out and it won't get lost. But I don't think we're going to solve this issue tonight.
Yep, I agree. Al wants to speak, but go ahead, Dave, and then we'll hear from Al, and then we'll move on to the next.
As a member of the Justice System Task Force, I was puzzled last meeting when somebody made a recommendation for Justice System Task Force, which was very specific, TASER policy, TASER use policy and another one. And then one council person said, so, what do we do? And another council person said, gee, I don't know. You guys asked us to do things like give you recommendations. I'm puzzled as to why, when we give you recommendations, you haven't figured out what to do with them ahead of time.
I can tell you that. This is the first time we've ever done this. This is the first time we've ever done this.
I'd like to ask you to do some more figuring out ahead of time, and I like what you're saying, but we're, I feel like, you know, and this is me speaking as me, not as a member of the task force, but as a member of the task force, if we keep going back and forth, we're never going to finish the conversation.
All of the recommendations, the recommendations that we discussed at the last meeting, all said that they needed to go back to the JSTF for more work. None of, none of them were ready to adopt.
But that's not, that's not, I don't believe that's true, but, I mean, I agree with you, Dave, that there's some disjuncture, but, and I'm not quite sure what to do about that. We suggested a recommendation that be required to go to CIT training, which, you know, we just heard from our chief, it was an excellent training. Council all agreed, but then we weren't willing to make it a resolution. We weren't willing to make it a, you know, a, and I'm not, I'm confused by the council, I have to say. So then the TASER policy, we maybe want to do this, we're going to be discussing next week about this idea of notice and comment, so we can be hearing all concerns. TASER policy is a specific thing that police officers work with, a piece of equipment they work with, how they use it, when they use it. So, you know, fine, we're going to, we may need to look at that again. I don't know. It feels like we're going back and forth. That's the way I feel as well. The implicit bias training, we know that that's a good idea. I'm not sure what else the committee's supposed to do. And now we're going to hear a recommendation about the social worker, and I'm not sure what we're supposed to, I mean, there's a, there is a big issue around that, which is the cost. And so I see it as a, something that is in, you know, how do you fit that into a budget? How do you pay for it? It's an excellent idea, you know, that council may say, yes, we like that idea, we want to consider, you know, adding that person to our staff. But anyway, I'm just jabbering on, but...
You guys need to figure out what you're going to do, and you guys need to be a little more clear about what you want from us.
Right. I think we have figured out a lot of things, so I want to say a few things, and then Al, you will get up here right after. So first of all, with many of these recommendations, we have discussed, and I think consensus for a preamble that is layered on top of the General Operations Manual that memorializes or formalizes all these things. So I think we have talked about that, and we just need to move that into a process. We understand that the TASER policy is something that is not necessarily an ordinance, but it does have to be changed formally in that GOM. And I think most importantly, every recommendation that has come, we have approved the idea that we agree with it in principle, and Chief Carlson has implemented it. So I think that's another thing that we're hearing. So I agree with Mary Ann, this is new territory, because council has not been involved, involved like this before, but I think we have come up with ways that we can formalize this, and we will do that soon.
You and I need to talk, because I need to understand it if I'm going to be the liaison. I truly am confused myself, so, just to say.
And one thing is, maybe when we have this kind of discussion, if we're having a whole council discussion, we need to have it earlier than quarter or ten, because this is very serious stuff. We've never done it before. We don't really have a full process.
And if, and if we remember, at the last meeting, we actually had our chief come up and talk for about ten minutes about how he's having a lot of difficulty, he's in an interim position, and he's having a lot of difficulty finding the time and the ability to implement these things that we're saying we want him to implement. That just happened at the last meeting, and now it's like we're turning around, and it's like, all of a sudden, we want things implemented immediately. We have, you know, we've sat here, we've made motions, we have supported, said we support all of these things. That doesn't mean that every detail is ready to be turned into a, into an ordinance. It just, I just feel we're not ready. And we've, and I agree, we've got to have a process for that to happen. But, but it's also very difficult, when we're talking about a huge department, we're not talking about a huge department, we're talking about a police department, we're talking about a lot of people, we're talking about a big order, what is that called? General Orders Manual. And we're piecemealing little policies, and I just can't believe that at some point, those policies don't interact with each other, and if we keep piecemealing little things at a time, that we're going to, that we're going to come up against something that we've just made one change that's going to impact another piece. I feel like doing this, doing this, one thing's brought to us and we make a decision. I don't think that's the way to do it.
That's why I was suggesting that we start keeping a book...
That's what I agree with you. I agree, yes.
And we just sort of track where things are.
I agree.
And when we get everything together, then we can look at it.
Al?
I mean, I just, I think you're making two, all you have to look at is this graph and see what's happened from 1,200 cases down to the less than 200. If we don't do something, we're not going to have a mayor's court. Virtually everyone in town thinks the mayor's court is a good thing. We're trying to, and all we were wanting you to do is to give support to the chief, so that when he tells the officers that all the cases that can go to the mayor's court, should go to the mayor's court, it would carry weight if you have backed him on that. It's, I mean, we can, we can spend years trying to get the details of all of the conditions. It's a general philosophy that has been the philosophy in the past, but it changed with some of our recent police officer chiefs.
Yes.
And now the mayor's court is in jeopardy of being abolished.
And the Justice System Task Force exists because we want more use of mayor's court. That's exactly one of the reasons we started it. We've got to have the process, we've got to get to the details. If, I think Chief Carlson has heard from council that that's what we are expecting. He's sent an email to his officers to use mayor's court as much as possible. That, I'm sorry.
We're, we, as a community and as a council, police department, committees, citizens, we're involved, we've committed ourselves to police reform. We're not the only community in the country doing this. This is a national movement. It's recognizing that we want to move the whole metaphor, especially at the smaller local level, from warrior culture connected to drug war, that has been the metaphor. We're moving that to local guardianship policing that aligns with village values. We have to keep this a big picture, because this is a culture change, and culture change takes years. And we need to always sort of think, well, we're not making a list of things to get done quickly. We, I think in March, I presented the federal Department of Justice format of the Six Pillars of Justice, a model. Now, we know, and the Justice System Task Force has, I mean, everyone on it has dug into research, models, conceptualizing, what are we talking about when we're talking about community policing? What are we talking about? What is the model? What are the qualities of this? So I just want to remind everyone, including Chief Carlson, this is not something we're doing this month. This is something that's going to take quite a bit of time to make this big change in how we understand local policing. And I somewhat agree with Mary Ann, although, again, I think it's a mistake to come up with a list, and then how to fix the list. I think we do have to keep something like, maybe Six Pillars of Justice is too complicated for this smaller community, but we have to keep some kind of a model and a vision of what we're talking about, and keep it, keep these recommendations into, inserted into this model, so we start to see what might be missing, or what it is we need to work on. So, it's getting kind of late, but we do have one more recommendation.
Yes.
Should we go for it?
Yes.
Okay. This recommendation, which would be to, the Justice System Task Force recommends the village council, directs the village manager, an interim chief of police, to pursue the hiring of a social worker to work within the department. Now, the research for this and the work for this was done by Kate Hamilton, but she's lost her voice, and Bill, you still had your voice, right?
I have my voice.
So we have, there is a way to answer questions that I wouldn't be able to answer, but basically, this is something that has been evolving, and other states have sort of initiated this. Illinois in particular, Kate spoke to many of the departments, there are over thirty departments in the state of Illinois that have a police social work, which is actually a career job, someone who is trained both in policing and social work. And the logic behind it, I think we pointed out when we talked about crisis intervention training, is that our officers, like most officers, spend a great deal of time in what we might call social work. We're talking about some, you know, the kinds of issues like troubled youth, domestic violence, suicide threats, things that really take some very, that are quite emotional, that are related to crisis intervention. And our officers have already started learning more about the skills of de-escalation. However, there's something that has to go past just the quick intervention. And having a social worker on staff, part-time or full-time, has made a big difference, and research has shown that it really has an impact, and you have the, you have the argument here. It is, again, a budget item, and so in terms of next steps, the idea was that a group would form to look at the funding aspect, because there actually, there is some levels of funding that would be available to communities, different ways of funding that. Now, I know that Kate and Bill have talked to Chief Carlson about this, and to Manager Bates, who both supported the concept, and could see the ways that it could be, really make a change in some of the burdens of our officers.
Well, I think it was particularly incredible that Chief Carlson has spent so much time last week in the, in the social work arena, so that really gives him some hands-on. I mean, I think this one is an easy, just to keep that work, just keep doing that work. I mean, I would...
I think the motion that I'm going to make is that council, what was your wording? Council direct Patty, our village manager with our interim chief to pursue the hiring, full-time or part-time, of a social worker. Now, this doesn't mean it's happening next week or next month, but it's, it's a concept. If we don't put it on the table, if it's put in a little file of ideas, it's never going to happen. And how exactly we're going to make it happen, we're not sure. So anyway, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, okay, so you're opposed. Okay. So I would like to also go along with, you know, Pat's suggestion that there be a small working group that works with Patty around the issue of trying to consider how to, you know, all the details of how to do this, which would be funding, well, I know there's already job descriptions that other places have developed, you know, sort of the next steps.
Yeah, I, when we met with Kate, I mean, it was wonderful what you guys have done, and Kate, as soon as you were feeling better, because, no offense, but I don't want to sit at the table with you, because I know you've been really sick, just get ahold of me and we'll start working on it.
I, you know, we didn't have time for discussion. I mean, you made the motion and we voted. We didn't have time for discussion. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I also am very concerned about the budget, and I'd much rather see how we are going to fund such a thing than just direct staff to hire a social worker.
Well, I am assuming that, and I apologize for the quick vote, I am assuming that, and I personally, I'm not thrilled with the language, I probably would have, to research the hiring or to investigate, I probably would have then pursue, that sounds a little, but I, and I personally think this should be a 2018, this, we should be talking about 2018 budget, not trying to fit this into the 2017 budget.
And I'm not suggesting that we have an increased, you know, police budget, actually. I think we have to, we're going to have to, when we're talking about a change in culture, we're talking about, thinking about things in a different way. If, I don't know what percentage of police cases are more, more social work cases. Did you say eighty percent? So if you're, so your whole approach is so different that it really can change the way you are, you know, populating your department. So that's a long-term thing, but if you don't start thinking about it and planning, you know, how you're going to try to do that, I mean, it's, it's a long-term...
But it seemed to me like we didn't think about it, we just voted, and now we're thinking about it. I mean, it feels so...
No, no, let's, let's think about this for a minute.
But it is 10 o'clock, so we don't have to figure it all out.
I've probably been half asleep, but I think what I heard was that we made a motion to have Patty and the chief start investigating how we might possibly move in the direction of hiring a social worker.
That's how I interpret it.
That's not what I heard.
That's what I thought I heard. That's what I voted, that's what I voted on.
I would, and I agree with you, Jer, I would like to actually modify, suggest we modify, because I would like there to be investigation of other avenues of social work support for our department, beyond just having an employee. I can't imagine that there aren't resources out there that we could take advantage of. So I would like it to be...
Kate's, Kate's got a lot of information about how these...
So, so rather than simply concentrating on hiring a staff person, I would like to learn more about any other avenues of social work support that we could get, that we could utilize. So, is council willing to, okay?
And I guess I feel like that is what the proposal is.
Yes, it is.
That there are different options, and we have to figure out what the best one is. That's what I understand.
I would have preferred a more general, but I agree with you that we can, I can support it.
I don't think that's actually, that's not, that's actually how it, so. Well, I have a lot of information that you can look over. Basically, that what the police social worker does is, they know about all of these different things that are available out there for, you know, the different social services, and they connect the dots. So they are sort of the person that, what is the word for it? Facilitates the connections, and instead of having to piecemeal all of that together, because we have that now. Because if you go down there now and you talk to one of the officers, they'll give you a card for TCN, they'll give you a card for the mediators, they'll give you a card for this, and they'll be like, oh, yeah, I have this. So this would be a person that would know all of those connections, and an officer could say, hey, I met with this person last night, and they don't seem to have family in town, he's really elderly, and then the social worker would go talk to that person, and then connect them with the service that they need. And that way, the officer as well can be kept in the loop about what happens with that person later on. And it does cut back on calls, because you'll have someone that calls constantly, an officer to come, you know, I don't know, I always, dumb example of fighting their glasses, but once you've had the social worker come in, connect them with the services they need, that will cut back on their calls to the officers who could be doing other things that are more officer-like, if that makes sense.
Well, and some of the officer-like things, like, you know, addiction, you know, which is something that tends to end up in criminal justice, you know, if you've got a social worker helping get that person get treatment or something like that, you know, theoretically, you know, it's much more the, not the warrior, but the guardian, as Pat was saying, it's moves, it really moves us in that direction. Anyway, we should explore it, I don't know...
I have tons of information.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I like to work with Kate on that.
Okay. So it sounds like we're good on that. We had a...
Thank you. We made a, we made a decision.
So we have a, we have a four, four one, a motion and a four to one vote. Moving on to the housing needs assessment. Mary Ann?
Well, on Friday?
Mm-hmm.
On Friday, several of us had a, I'll let everyone go. Several of us had a phone conversation with Patrick Bowen and his assistant, Desiree Johnson, who are, let's see, they're a realist... Johnson, who are, let's see, they're a real estate analyst organization out of Columbus, Ohio. The purpose of discussing with them was to get some more sense of, well, what is in a housing needs assessment? What should we be asking for? What might the cost be? And we had gotten their name from Emily Sivell, who has hired them for Home Inc. So the reason why we are wanting to do a housing needs assessment is, first of all, to inform us about what our housing needs are currently and into the, well, whatever amount of time we decide, I was saying, five to 10 years. So what is the current state of our housing? And looking into the future, what, what would our housing needs be? And there are a number of kind of things that a housing needs assessment can, data that can, it can gather. Can look at the current housing stock, the age of the housing stock, the high, the size of the houses, the price range, what they're selling for. It can look at the income of the residents in our village and what are they paying for housing? What kind of gaps are there in terms of what people want and what we have? Do we have housing for special needs people? Do we have senior housing? Do we have workforce housing? It can look at a lot of different, we can get a lot of different data from a study and we need to know what's the most important data that we want. So we want, so, so to do this, we could just look at the glass farm, but if we're going to do this, we might as well be looking at something that can get information for the whole village because it's not only the glass farm that is a potential site for development. So it would seem that depending on how wide a net we want to throw, housing cost, the housing needs assessment would cost from about $10,000 to $30,000. If we, and if keeping it under $30,000, I think, would enable Patty to do it without putting out bids, although we certainly would want to get some formal bid process.
Well, 30,000 is my spending limit. However, I mean, you may still want to do a formal RFP.
Yeah. I mean, we would do a formal, presumably we would. So part of the discussion was then looking at, are there other entities in Yellow Springs that might want to be involved in putting some money into a housing needs assessment? Might want to have some particular questions being asked? So depending on how, what council might say, what my next thing that I was going to suggest to do is to invite some other groups in town. For example, someone from the schools, Friends Care, Home Inc., any, Green Matt, any organization that we think might want to be involved to have a meeting to find out, are they interested in finding out more about housing for whatever their constituency group is? So I'm going to stop now. I'm sort of worn out, actually. Any comments, questions from the council?
Denise is going to be involved in this?
Yeah. So the people who were on this phone call were Patty Bates, Denise Swinger, Karen Winthro, myself, and Brittany from Home Inc. And I think we found Patrick Bowen to be very helpful, I mean, certainly very knowledgeable. And we also have resources, so we have sample RFPs for, we, I have one housing needs assessment that was done for a community not too dissimilar from Yellow Springs to see the kind of information that can be gotten.
So what you're asking at this point is, is maybe for the next step of, of, you know, contacting other community organizations and, and-
Yeah, I want to see what kind of questions, concerns, ideas council has.
And, you know, that price, and as I, you know, I was there, part of the reason we're talking about the other, bringing in some potential funders is that each one of these pieces costs a certain amount of money. And so if there is information that might help inform, but we wouldn't necessarily need it, there might be somebody out there that would be interested in, in doing a little bit more study, say, on senior housing or something like that. So I think that there's a lot of potential, I've got a list of almost 10 here that I think might be potential, even for just a small amount of money. Because I think it's going to provide actually great information for the, for the entire community. And it's something the schools were talking about, you know, how many students to expect moving into the future, so.
You know, one thing I could have given this to council, I didn't, but I can do it for the next packet, is what, what I had written up for this phone call, which will give you more of an idea of what was involved. I'll put that in the next council packet.
One thing, without getting into the detail of it, I feel like we should put some kind of timeframe around this because I'm, because I would like, you know, us to get this accomplished by, you know, for us to have kind of a deadline as to when we want to get the RFP out and then when we want to have it completed.
Yeah, I agree. We could say it might take three months to do this study, a month or so to get the RFP together. So I'm, definitely by the end of this calendar year, we should have it completed.
And I'm sorry.
Well, make sure you build in your advertising time and time to review your, you know, your responses to the RFP because that's, that's time-consuming as well. You have to not only write it to the specs that you want, but you have to-
But we can't write the specs until we know who might have an interest so that, so how long will that process take of sort of identifying?
I'd like to get that done in the next couple of weeks. Are you going out of town, Mary Ann? Not, okay.
I'd like to go out. I'd like to, I'd like to maybe get that done in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So am I understanding correctly that this, this could be a collaborative effort then with those groups to formulate that RFP?
Potentially, right.
Potentially, okay. One thing I didn't hear listed out, but I would, I think would be important, is sort of this piece of what's the impact on the community, the affordability, that sort of thing, just, you know, as, as we look at different ways that we build out the housing stock, what's that going to mean? And that ties to utilities and that sort of thing. I think that's maybe more of a sophisticated analysis, but I think it gets to the heart.
Do you mean just the cost of those utility extensions? What do you-
That, but also like-
But he's saying they'll pay the benefit of sort of having more.
Right.
But isn't that something that our staff can do?
Well, it was, the, we did talk during the phone call, if I'm understanding what you're meaning, Brian. We did talk during the phone call about the percentages, like if we have the ability to build X number of homes.
Right.
What percentage of those should be market value homes? What percentages should be low income? That, what percentages should be senior? And that affordability piece was included in there, not necessarily to continue on it to, into the impact of the support of our utilities, but-
And taxes and that kind of thing.
Is an overall concept.
Right. So I guess I just wanted to be figured out, if we can do that analysis in-house, great.
Well, I think part of what they'll tell us, what this, what this study will tell us is, is what kind of housing, what kind of variety of housing, like how much affordable housing we need, how much senior housing we need. And then I think at that point, that might be something that staff could take those numbers. I mean, you know about, if it's affordable housing, there's a price range. And, and so that's going to generate so many, so much in taxes, property values. So I think that there might be a way to extrapolate out what you're asking for, which is basically how it impacts the overall cost of living in the village. Is that what you're asking?
Sure. Because I mean, I, that's why we care about this, I think.
Right, right.
I just want to make sure it's driven.
Well, it's not the only reason.
Yeah.
It's not the only reason, right?
I'm not saying it's the only reason, but I think it, it's high on the list. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're thinking about the goals behind why we're doing this. You know, it's, it's a planning tool, but ultimately, you know, it's just about how we're shaping the village and, and again, how it ties to utilities, affordability, taxes, whatever.
So when you say goals, the goals for why we would want more housing?
Sure. And I agree, I think there's a lot of, lot of factors. I just don't want to lose that in sort of the, you know, nuts and bolts.
Okay, I'm writing that down. Okay, so, so Mary Ann and I will work on getting this next meeting together and then if Mary Ann can, I don't know if we need to have it as a discussion item at the next meeting, but at least if she could have these, some of the materials that we've received, she could have those in the package just for council or even just send them out to council for council review.
Well, maybe put it in the package so that-
Yeah, so citizens can see it, yeah. Okay, new business, we've got nominations. I believe we have two nominations for the Economic Sustainability Commission.
Yes. So first of all, Luciana Leaf, who is an alternate, and she's been, she is the secretary, we would like to, or I would like to nominate her for a full position. And then we have a new member, we have their information on our table, which is Sammy Sauber, also to fill that second full position. So I'd like to make a motion to nominate two really stellar individuals for this commission.
My second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the Council Land Trust request, who wants to handle that one?
I'll take it.
Okay.
This is the, we get this every year from TLT. It's requesting a sponsorship for the harvest auction. They are requesting that, I believe, a green tractor sponsorship, which is what we did with them last year. It was, it's $250 and they filled out the form there, you can see. Came through my office as was required and we're here for council approval.
I move that we approve their, their request.
Second. All those in favor, any discussion?
I think we're following.
The only thing is, let's just make sure we get on the program this year. Yep, that's it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We've done our reports.
I want to say, I think it's good doing the reports earlier, you know, just having done it tonight. I feel like there's so much information that's so great, what the staff is doing and citizens are not hearing that information. And so I just, I felt like it was really good. So I would like to change that on our agenda. I know we have to-
I don't think we need to, I think we can do it.
Make a big deal, yeah.
We don't need to change those.
Yeah, I just thought that was really good.
Rules. Okay, so future agenda items, so we will have the glass farm easement?
That's, it's in TLT's hands. I mean, they're working with their surveyor, unfortunately, he was in the hospital, which could be part of the reason that he didn't get this to us in time. I mean, we're ready on our end. We're just waiting for the revised, revised survey, attack, you know, exhibit, so.
Okay. We've got two pieces of legislation on the Gustafson property. I know that she's anxious to move forward on that, so hopefully that's moving forward and she's understanding and-
I think it is. Jesse is working on that project.
Okay. We've got the resolution related to the enterprise zone agreement that, between the Green County Board of Commissioners and Village of Yellow Springs. And Judy, can we change that to DMSINK instead of date mailing services? That's their new name. And Paul Newman Jr. from Green County Department of Development will be here to present that.
And INK is lowercase.
The I's an uppercase. Resolution 2017, let's see, adopting guidelines for policing for the Village of Yellow Springs. So that's the-
That's, isn't that the 365? And they're working on that, is that correct?
That's, that's what they said.
I thought that, but I thought that it was back to you and Mary Ann, you were Smith.
Yeah, I think it's back to me, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
I kind of heard both things.
Wait, is it back to who?
I think it's back to Brian.
That's what I had in mind, yeah.
They had also mentioned about doing some different versions and things, but yeah, so we'll all-
Yeah, that's what we're getting together on Thursday, so.
Yes.
We've got HRC's end-of-year report and Environmental Commission end-of-year report. We, and we need to tell you this, there will be an executive session personnel for the review of the village manager.
I think the May 15th.
Yes. And then the only other thing we have, June 5th, well, we'll have a couple of resolutions, second, or reading of the, second reading of the ordinance. And then we agreed to put the lodging tax on the June 5th agenda.
Are you planning to bring a resolution regarding the permanent chief to the June 5th meeting? I wasn't quite sure of your timeframe there.
Let's put it on the agenda just as a placeholder. I think that would, if, if it'll, if it works, I think that's the goal. Let's, let's clarify the lodging tax situation and what is going to happen on June 5th? Is it just a discussion item?
That's what I have it in my calendar to bring back, is a discussion item.
Okay.
I can get a sample legislation from another, another area if you want, but-
I mean, I don't think that's, first of all, we got to decide if we want to-
If we want to go in that direction.
And I do believe that there are restrictions in the ORC as to what that funding can be used for.
I believe so, yes.
So that, and I will just say ahead of time, I'm going to be recusing myself from that, so I won't even be in the room.
And I, I'm sorry, did you also, were you looking for any kind of recommendation from the, or input back from the manager's advisory board regarding broadband, super broadband on that June 5th?
I think that's going to take-
Well, we should put it, we should put it on there, but I don't know.
Yeah, let's put it on for June 5th. They may want to come back. I feel like the May 15th agenda is too full for, to put that back on.
I don't think they're going to be ready anyway.
So let's put, for June 5th, let's put the fiber advisory report. Thanks, Judy, for remembering. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We all agree with that.